Good morning. I called to order the Town of Oak Island Planning Board Regular Meeting for September the 15th, 2022. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to state that we do have a quorum. Natasha Tatum texted me last night, said she would not be able to be here this morning. And our newly appointed member to take Lee Butson's place was David Bradley.
Yes, and I spoke with him yesterday and, of course, understood that that's a short notice. He is out of town.
Okay.
So I'm going to send him an email with information and we'll expect next time.
We look forward to hopefully seeing him at our audit meeting on the 12th. Okay. All right. Next thing is adjustment or approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything to add or take away to our agenda today? If not, do I have a motion to approve as presented? Tom, second?
Second.
Carrie? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next is approval of minutes, and we have the minutes from our initial UDO audit meeting on August the 11th. Anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions, edits to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Bob?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Tim?
Nobody wants to second the meeting, Tim?
You can vote on it even though you weren't here. That's fine.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. All in favor? It is unanimous. Yeah, I know people feel funny. I always did about.
Right, but they're the board's minutes, not anybody's individual.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. And you still have an opportunity to review. And now you can watch the minutes, watch the meeting while you're reviewing the minutes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have no members of the public present, so we will move on to our item of old business, which is looking at a review of vacant town-owned property for potential open space zoning. It might be from environmental impacts. And so, Mr. Matt, will you introduce this for us?
I will soon. Bear with me just a minute here. My window closed with all my notes on it. Wait for just a second, I'll get that pulled back up and get cracking. Okay. All right. There we go. So you may recall at the last month's meeting, the board discussed some town-owned property and potential zoning map changes to that property. The board had a pretty broad discussion on that, and then there was a consensus to do a more thorough review of town-owned properties to look at those environmental impacts and whether there's any zoning map amendments that should be warranted as a part of those. So we looked at Brunswick County tax records, found anything that said Town of Oak Island or, and some said Town of Long Beach. So we found some of those, too. They're still ours, I assure you, even though the tax record says Long Beach, it all goes to the address right here. So we reviewed properties and we looked at ones that they're currently developed, you know, if we have a water tower on them or something like that, if they have a project scheduled for them. You know, we didn't want to look into those because you might recommend a zoning change that would preclude that type of project. And then there's some parcels that are listed on the tax record as town property, but they're not town property anymore because the beach has taken them over. They're not even property at all. It's just kind of a trick of the GIS map there where there's, you might pull some up and they look like they're like right on the beach. Well, they're not anybody's actual property. It's just a relic of GIS and deed, deed information. I would point out, prior to getting into this discussion in detail, I know you all keep up with town council and their actions pretty regularly. At their last meeting, they wanted to initiate review of town-owned property for potential parking areas as a part of their review of all parking in the town. So keep that in your mind as we review some of these, too. That review is also happening at the town council level for those potential uses as well. It's something to keep in mind. So I broke it down into groups, so we don't have to look at individual parcels because most of these are all grouped together. Once we kind of weeded out some of those other parcels, we came up with four groups. The first one is the one most people probably think of right off the top of their head, which is the Point. The Point is four parcels on the westernmost portion of the island. It's currently zoned R7. It's identified in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as being suitable for open space and conservation. The town owns this property, and when it was deeded to the town, it was restricted in that deed to not be developed for any structure, anything other than pedestrian access. So you can get out there and walk, that's the gist of what you can do. So even though it's currently zoned R7, it's not developable by that deed restriction. So it's something to keep in mind for this one, too. And we'll take a look at some of those impacts. The first one, one people think of a lot, is flood hazards. The majority, the properties are highlighted in red on these maps that the town owns. The majority is in a VE, Special Flood Hazard area. There's a little bit of AE in the back. VE is a coastal flood hazard, meaning that there's wave action that's washing over that. So not only is there water, there's, which you might see in a typical flood, where there's slow or not moving water at all, it's just a pool of water. This actually has some additional impacts because of that wave action, and they have additional development standards as a part of that.
Yeah, a good bit of that has been underwater at high tide.
And we'll take a look, too. On the next map is, this doesn't line up very well with the GIS, but you can get a good idea of the shape. It's really just kind of shifted northward a little bit there. This is storm surge inundation. This is a product of the NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. They look at inundation hazards as related to typical storm categories. So like the yellow that you see here is a category one or two. So that means the lowest category of storm that they look at can inundate in this property. So as the chair mentioned, it's pretty easy for it to end up being underwater. So like the higher category it is, the less chance there is of inundation because that would be, require a much more impactful storm in that instance.
Matt, if I can ask a question?
Sure.
You know, maybe if you go a little more slowly, but.
Sure.
So maybe these, the other members understand this, but when you say that this land that's in yellow would be impacted by category one, and then you said, I thought you said it would be underwater or something, or inundated or something.
Inundated, that's right.
Well, what, could you describe that a little bit better? Like, you know, does category one mean that these places will get an inch of water or they won't get an inch of water, or they'll get two feet? What, how do you?
That's a great question. I don't think NOAA breaks the data down in that way. I can look into it a little bit further as we continue these discussions, for sure. But really, they just look at inundation, right? Is there water on, like, is it underwater, which you would consider inundated, not just, you know, you might walk down the street and there's water on the street, that doesn't mean it's inundated. I can certainly look into the, how NOAA defines that going forward if we want that additional information.
If you have time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, let's not ask, what was Floyd? What category was Floyd?
It was two.
It was a two?
But.
And it depends, it depends on the wind, it depends on what the tide is at the time. I mean, it could be nothing or you could be.
It depends on the track of the storm.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables.
Right. If it avoids the west point, then I assume it won't get wet.
I wouldn't go pitch a tent and camp out down there.
Right. Okay.
Keep in mind, there was the road that looped, the loop all the way out and around at one time. That was pretty much.
The late 70s, I think?
Late 70s. I think Diana in 84 kind of finished it off. And as a result of that, and the, Longwood Folly is an oscillating inlet, and we happen to be the dog tail on that oscillating inlet. And so that accounts for more so than storms over longer cycles, decadal cycles, why it goes on down there.
And so the key takeaway from this is, you're right, it depends on the storm where it hits, et cetera, but this would be the most likely area. If it were a direct hit, it would, it would not take a category five storm to impact this property if it was received a direct hit. We can certainly look into the categorization and how NOAA attains that data and what that data means. I will backtrack just a little bit, too, for people that may not be aware. On the flood hazard area, the VE and the AE are a 1% annual chance of a flood hazard.
It's the same chance every year?
It's the same 1% every year. The, there's a nomenclature out there of a 100-year and a 500-year storm that people take to mean that it's going to happen once every 500 years. But that's, that's not what this means. It means that there's a, while people would categorize this as a 100-year storm, there's a 1% chance of this type of storm happening every year, is what it boils down to. And that 5% storm, just for your knowledge, is a 0.2% chance every year of that level of storm. That's correct.
The chances aren't too high.
And for the data on this, this is generated by FEMA and North Carolina, the state departments generate these maps. We do adopt them locally because the flood hazard program, while it's a FEMA program, it's run locally by the town. We participate in that program voluntarily so that people can buy flood insurance, because if you don't participate in that program, local people can't buy any flood insurance from the federal government. This one didn't show up very well on the screen. I apologize for that. The last impact that we were able to locate on the site is the inlet hazard area. This is a area determined from the Coastal Resources Commission that's vulnerable to erosion flooding.
We've got wetlands up there now.
There is some wetlands identified over here in the corner. It's outside of the town-owned property.
Oh, I see, sort of the yellow.
Yeah, so sorry, the hashed yellow area is, it's faint on the screen, I apologize for that, but that's the inlet hazard area. You can kind of see the outline of it, kind of around here. There's probably, if you have your printed packet, it's probably a little bit more legible than that than it is on this, the screen. So that means it's vulnerable to, you know, adverse effects of wind, sand, anything you might see in an inlet. It's a pretty straightforward designation there because that inlet does move around, you know, with tides and currents, et cetera. As you can see, development is permitted in the IHA, subject to CAMA rules and regulations, similar to what you might have in a flood hazard area. They have additional development standards that you have to meet. So the development in this parcel that's not in the town is very highly regulated because it's in the IHA and it's in the flood hazard area. So there's quite a lot that folks have to do to build down there, in addition to what you might, if you didn't have those two designations on the piece of property.
Yeah. One of the things in inlet hazard areas, and I think today, actually, CRC's meeting, met yesterday and meeting today, they are looking at extending that area, I think, down to about 60th or somewhere in there. But fundamentally, it won't change most of what's in that area in terms of, because the biggest thing on inlet hazard areas is you have to, for lots planted after some date in 1979, it has to be 15,000 square feet.
Sounds about right, yeah.
And so all of those lots along West Beach were planted long before that. That also accounts for what I call the orphan lots, the three lots there out front. They were planted sometime in the 50s, I think.
It's right here.
So even though they're not, they're not 15,000 square feet, they're still allowed. But all the lots that were planted in the 90s in those phases of Harbor at Kingsland, which is where we got the, part of that process is how we got the land that we have out there. All of those had to be at least 15,000 square feet.
And that brings up an important point, that the inlet hazard area is not something that the town designates. It's designated by the Coastal Resources Commission, which is a state-level agency. We do have a local permit officer who reviews CAMA permits, but the end decision for anything that happens in these areas can and does go to the Division of Coastal Resources, I believe, VCM, Division of Coastal Management, sorry for that. And the CRC sets up these areas and regulations.
Are these properties zoned?
The properties that we're reviewing right now that the town owns?
Right.
They're zoned R7.
So the town could sell them and residential building could go on them, as long as they meet the CAMA?
It's restricted via deed. So you could, it's, when it was donated to the town, it was restricted by that deed for no development other than pedestrian access.
Which reminds me of, we don't have to go into this now, but it reminds me of Dara's earlier comments about making them zoned for open space.
And that's what we're reviewing right now, is whether that makes sense, for sure. That's the last environmental impact we were able to determine here. I looked at the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program, which also identifies important natural areas. We looked at biodiversity and wildlife habitat data that's out there. Unfortunately, that's not super great at the parcel level. It gets kind of muddy and hard to tell exactly what they're trying to map out. So I didn't really think it would be super useful for this exercise. So basically, we ended up with, you know, wetlands, flood hazards, inundation data because those other data sources weren't particularly useful or not really legible for the board to look at. This is the last slide I have for this particular group. We can do this a couple of ways. You guys can talk about this one specifically.
I think let's talk about it group at a time.
However you want to break it out is fine.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah. So for group, well, for the parcels down at the point, first of all, anybody have any, any further questions for Matt about what's, what, the information that we have? And do you have any comments? Carrie?
So, so is our next action to recommend that these be rezoned for open space slash conservation?
So there's a couple of things you can do. The way we can go through this process, you can make individual recommendations, you can, I know we've talked about on some of these parcels that we're going to look at, you know, having further information about some town projects that are going on in the area, if you'd like to mark it as that's what you would like to do and then bring everything all at once, you know, so that when we have all the information, this board can, you'll have to make a formal, you know, zoning map amendment recommendation with a consistency statement, et cetera. You don't have that in front of you today. But if it's the consensus of this board and you all vote that that's how you want to recommend, then whenever we have all the information, we can make a formal recommendation and I can just backtrack to what you all decided, if anything, today.
Yeah, I think if, because all we're dealing with here is all we really have the authority to deal with, and that is town-owned property. We can't zone other people's property for them. It's probably a good thing. And I don't know what, for me, it seems, it makes more sense if we're doing all town property and we've thoroughly gone through everything than to bring all of that forward as a group rather than piecemeal it here or there. I don't know if there's some, from an administrative or advertising, some other thing that makes that, would make that simpler to break it down somehow. But I'll rely on you to.
Yeah, and from an advertisement standpoint, any zoning map amendment requires that I post the property, put it signed up, notify adjacent property owners. So whether you piecemeal it or bring it all at once, I have to do the same notice for each property that you're recommending anyway, so.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if that's.
It doesn't really make a big.
Easier administratively.
I just have to drive around a little bit more to post the signs, which I don't mind at all.
Well, and I don't think, would we get into some kind of, what do you call it? It escapes me now. It's big enough that you have to do something else? There's a name for that?
Large-scale rezonings are typically more, ones that affect more than 50 properties. This would not rise to that level of being a large-scale rezoning, so.
If we pieced everything all together.
It wouldn't matter how we did it, no ma'am.
We wouldn't need to worry about that. Okay. All right. Carrie, comments?
I'll just, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, that when this property was deeded to the town, there was a restriction about leaving the property in its natural state. So it's pretty straightforward as to what the, what we're required to do, the town is required to do by, by the deed.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, that's a good point. This is, I mean, the Comprehensive Plan recognizes it as open space. So from the consistency standpoint, this one is very straightforward, but it's also the least urgent because of that deed restriction that's in there. It's not like somebody could go buy it from the town and build something on it tomorrow.
Carrie?
So I have one comment kind of slash question. In addition to the manager saying the other night that they would look at town properties for possible parking options, I believe I also heard him say that the town had three parcels that they would be willing to sell to generate funds to perhaps go purchase another piece of property if, if what we have is not suitable for parking. So that's a concern. And then my question is, you know, how can we find out what those three, three, three properties are? So that's kind of a general, general comment. In terms of these properties, I looked at the deed, you know, the restriction should be in perpetuity and go with the land, but I would like to see us put whatever the strictest restriction is, we can put on in addition to it, because the Point didn't used to look like that. And there are always loopholes and cracks and interpretations and attorneys and, and next thing you know, somebody's figured out a way to, you know, do something that they shouldn't do. So my perspective is, let's put the, put the tightest restriction on it that we can.
Sure.
Bob?
No comments. I agree.
I agree. I mean, it used to, it was, when I first moved here, it was big rolling dunes, that vegetation was.
Oh, I mean, I remember as a kid, you know, doing the loop-de-loop around the, down there in the 60s, and if you, of course, if you got off the road, you're going to get stuck. But, and, and, I mean, there were people who were down there with dune buggies, playing rat patrol, you know.
I know guys that got stuck it with the tide driving over to the island over there. Yeah, their vehicles didn't last long after that.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the aerials and, and there's a really good, of course, the Corps got all that set as DOT, but all that, Bill Clery, in the geologist with UNCW is retired now, he put together a book on all the inlets and gave, you know, pictures of some of the, kind of decadal pictures to see how everything has changed over time. It's amazing how dynamic it is.
And I agree. Anything we can do to protect what little we've got left.
Yeah.
I have one additional question, if I may. Matt, what would the staff's recommendation be for how we might best protect this property? Is, is there a conservation overlay? Do we change the?
Yeah, open space zoning district. That's the most conservation-based zoning district that we have right now. And that's consistent with our adopted land use plans.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
If we change, if we did what you're talking about, what we're thinking, how would something like the, the, is it 63rd Street where they changed the zoning on that and now there are houses all over, is that something that the town could go back and rescind and?
The thing, the thing that we'll keep, and I think, the thing that we'll keep, that even, in other words, the land use plan has the open space designation clearly from the deed restrictions. It's intended for open space natural. Now, granted, in our open space code and table of uses, there's some issues there, which I'll want to bring up at the end of all this. But, but having, having said that, and I think putting something in the code speaking to deed restrictions for open space may be a way of getting at the conservation, any kind of thing, and without having to create a whole another thing. But, but yeah, I think the, for the Point at least, the zoning, in my mind, because people, people still today, they look at, they pull up on the map, people who now do that, more and more people do these days, utilize those tools that are available to them. And they say, well, it's on R7, you can build houses down there, and they automatically jump to, well, the town's going to sell it off and all this other stuff, not understanding, I think, if you had the zoning there to begin with, that would alleviate some of that. Yes, you can change zoning, but there again, having something in, they go far enough to see that something with a deed restriction is written into the code, so that's up there and you don't have to do all that digging to figure that out. And you can point to that and say, no, the town's not going to sell that. No, the town hasn't sold this, the town has never owned it until, you know, the subdivision that's there is how we got that and it was given to us with those restrictions, intending to preserve it in essentially its natural state. Of course, that made the properties that they did subdivide more valuable, but that's a whole nother issue. Yeah.
And Mr. Pittman, if I can speak to your point a little bit, definitely as far as the tools that this board has available to them, changing the zoning is the tool that you have available or changing the UDO in some way to affect those zoning districts. This board makes a recommendation to town council, it's still up to town council, to determine whether or not those zoning map amendments should be approved or not. You know, future town councils, future can change that zoning map again. It's just like any rule in the town. It's subject to the approval of town council. You know, should a future council decide that, based on their land use plans and information, a different zoning makes more sense, then that would be the, you know, the prerogative of that elected official body.
Well, I heard your point, the deed restriction is what sets this apart. I mean, I guess there is no deed restriction on that.
Well, and, no, there weren't.
It wasn't town-owned property.
And it wasn't town property.
That's private property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but with the deed, I know that we've got people now that will list property, I've had people list property and they'll say, I'm going to sell this lot, as long as they've got an adjoining parcel. If they say, I want to sell this lot, but I want to put a restriction on it that no piling, it's got to be either a slab or a crawl space, because they've got a house on the ground and they don't want somebody being able to look down in their backyard. And as long as they own that adjoining property, then that restriction stands and there's nothing, they are the only ones that can change that. So if this has got a deed restriction on it, then it follows it for the life of the.
That's right.
Property, okay.
Yeah.
Only other question I've got, because I'll forget to ask this if I don't ask it now. The parcels that are off the, off the beach, I know Yopon has got some, you can see where they were platted out, that they're actually out in the breakers right now. If something were to happen, that a storm would come through and rearrange that beachfront, that all of a sudden that was dry land again, what happens to the people that those were deeded to?
That's a great question, and I'm now land use attorney, so I cannot speak to it.
I'll add that question. If something happened, they reappear.
Well, yeah, that's a.
Houses that we sold as oceanfront property were no longer oceanfront.
I know the water on that a little bit. There are all kinds of constitutional and other statutory definitions about what, how the, depending on how the original deed was done in the original plat, but there's accretion and erosion, things that sometimes if it's completely under in public land, it's gone forever. In other cases, it's potential that it could pop back up.
Okay.
So it depends. And that's a, that is definitely.
Probably take a judge to figure some of that stuff.
You could, you could, you need a really good attorney to figure all that out.
Yeah.
Okay. The only other thing I'd like to point out, and this would be for when this comes up, there's, there's the one parcel there that's, of the top of the Loop Road, that's the parking area on the north side, if you will.
Well, be sure.
It's not right there. Yeah, it's not really, it's a tract in there, and I don't remember exactly how that's, but that's not really, in other words, to make clear, that's, because that has its own restrictions. And I'm not sure if, depending on what's in our, what ends up being in our open space designation, the parking area might be something, but don't know that we would get.
Eventually.
Usually not.
Yeah, there, so the, the intent of our open space zoning is really for natural conservation and, and very, very low impact uses. You know, like nature walks, which is like an unimproved pathway perhaps, or things of that nature. A hardscaped like parking area, I mean, definitely we can dig into those weeds if we want to look at the, the uses and things like that. It, it would certainly have some, some impacts on, you know, the, the future of those open space areas.
Yeah, the thing I'm not, the thing I'm not sure about, probably the better question is, in, under the R7 zoning, I'm assuming, I know we used to have, that we can have public parking lots in R7 as a use. And so that supports that deed restriction on that property.
Yeah.
The other thing at the end of West Echo Island Drive, or West Beach Drive, the parking lot in the front, there's a little, there's a little triangle there. That was the original piece of that that was deeded kind of for that purpose. It doesn't have the same restrictions. But then there's a, just a little off to the west side of the parking lot there, there's just a little sliver. And I think it's on the plat, it's on a couple of plats actually, but I think it's on the plat, where we got that big section in the front, that is like 40 by 150, that's separated out of that for any kind of recreational sort of, I mean, that's why we can have parking spaces there. And so whatever the zoning, without, if we go, you know, get to the fat, place where we're gonna separate the zoning, that needs to be divvied out of that area.
Yeah.
But what I heard is somebody's gonna make a motion to rezone this as open space.
Madam Chair, one last question, I guess.
Yeah.
With this discussion of the two parking lots.
Yeah.
Who owns those two parking lots?
We do.
Those are town parking lots.
And why aren't they circled and in red?
Because, as we just talked about, I removed properties that already were developed. So developed properties would not be consistent with open space. You'd be creating a town-owned property that has a legal nonconformity on it.
What we have in the packet are the one, are the properties that the town owns that you thought we could do open space on.
That's right.
Not all of the town-owned property.
That's right, because you have pump stations, you have water towers, you have all kinds of stuff out there. That you wouldn't, you would create something inconsistent with the ordinance by zoning it open space.
Got it.
Yeah.
But, but it's, well, my point is...
Yeah, this is not a review of every single parcel that the town owns.
Right.
That's correct. We'd be here for many, many days to do that.
I agree, but my, I guess my point is it's been editorialized. It's, it's, it's your slant on it. It's not every piece of property, so, got it.
That's correct. It is not every piece of property.
Yeah, there, there are a few that, you got most of what I had in my shortlist, but you missed a couple. We'll talk about that at the end of this.
Ah, because it's not in his slant, so, that's why.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion on recommending rezoning this to? We don't have the, do we just want to do that as set aside for the total or?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to make a recommendation on it, then I can, when, when we're ready to bring back formal motions, I, I can refer back to that and, and just say, this is what you recommended at this meeting. Here's the consistency statement to match that recommendation and, and go from there.
I guess it'd be like a motion to rezone these parcels down to the point as presented to open space and adopting the consistency statement to be...
And, and Madam Chairman, would, would that also include, as we discussed, potentially within the UDO, some protection of deeded restrictions going forward? Is that necessary?
I think the, the UDO part of it, because like, I want to have a, a brief discussion about what's in the UDO with that. I think that's a, something we can just make note of as making part of that. But in terms of, you know...
Yeah, I would separate out the zoning map from the text.
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
So is there a motion to that effect?
Who moved?
Carrie, any second?
I'll second.
Carrie, seconds all around. Okay.
All in favor?
On we go, group two. Group two, much easier than that one. Little bit less to discuss on this one. Well, I don't, okay, well, not, maybe not easier, but less, less identified environmental impacts. I'll state it that way.
Yes.
Matt, if I could?
Sure.
You know, my last couple of questions drove out, like a, a couple of worries. But, you know, you know, I was in software and you have to think of every option. And I always think of what's the worst and what's the best. And what, you know, in, if we just put the last map up there, because my comment will apply to every map that we have. What we don't have on this map is town lots that, that are owned by the town, right? Lots that are owned by the town that you don't think should be put to open space. And, you know, just using this as an example, I know what we voted on and everything. This is just theoretical. And when we look at the next map, and the next map, there's four of them here. What are the spots, what are the lots that are owned by the town that you don't think should be? So that when we go to the next lot, it, it, the next, if you, would you move to the next drawing, please? So if you just look at these, we don't know that four other lots are owned by the town, but he didn't think that they should be.
They're already developed. The distinction is it's, it's already developed.
Okay.
And, and the, and the understanding being that, because we've been talking about this in terms of open space, that open space, the type of development that's already on those parcels is not consistent with an open space zone. Is that fair?
Yeah, so if you, say you take a look at a piece of property that has a, a fire station on it, that the town owns, use on it open space, a hurricane comes in and blows that fire station away. We cannot rebuild the fire station at that location now.
No, let's, let's not go into the, the obvious, okay? And I guess maybe, and I said, I'm thinking first case here for discussion. Is, I think Darrell, the chairman, mentioned two criteria. So what we're looking at here, you know, just as a theoretical discussion, are the town lots that have no use on them at the moment and could be, could be, because of that, could be rezoned to open space.
Yeah.
And there are no other town, so...
The other piece of that, as Matt has stated, is that there may be other vacant parcels in the town, but they are, the town has already...
If we've committed to a project or have a project planned?
There's a project or some project proposed.
That's, that's correct.
They're involved in some, in some type of...
Because you run into the same problem. This board will have made a recommendation for a piece of property that has a project planned for it. And then now we can't do that project that town council may have budgeted and approved.
I get it. And I've asked for a little leeway, I guess, to ask my question because I'm driving at something that may not even exist.
That's good.
Okay, but if it doesn't, if, if we, if I can't get to the point where we decide it doesn't exist, I have to keep asking the questions. So I'm trying to ask here, is, what we're looking at is properties that the town owns. I think we agree to that. And no, nothing is going on there or planned there or is already a fire station. And fair, right? Okay, so the, the other half of that question is, are there other lots here? You know, using this as just an example, that the town owns, that nothing is going on and no fire stations are planning to be built? And you decided wouldn't be suitable to rezone as open space?
No.
Okay, so this is an exhaustive list of open properties with nothing going on.
I sat down with the town manager and looked at every single piece of property that the town owns and asked, do we have a project? Do we have something planned for this piece of property? And the ones that you have in front of you are the ones that the answer was no.
Thank you. And, and so the three lots that we could potentially sell, are they listed somewhere in here?
I don't know which three lots he was referring to, so I'd have to get that information for you.
But, but since he was thinking of selling them, they may not be listed here because, oh no, we may sell those.
Well, that'd be at the, the behest of the town council as to whether to sell those pieces of property or not.
No, I get it, but I'm wondering if they're listed here as town-owned or, or do they fall into the category that you said where there's already something planned for?
As I mentioned, these are the property, I don't know what three properties he was referring to, so I'd have to get that information for you.
Okay, okay. So thank you.
Carrie on that?
Uh, group two. This group of parcels is located at the intersection of Oak Island Drive and Middleton Avenue. Small, little group of parcels there. Those are currently zoned R6. These are identified in the comprehensive land use plan as being suitable for high-density residential. That's similar to the entirety of that R6 section, the comprehensive land use plan is, includes all of that. There's actually a direct implementing action item from the comprehensive land use plan that the town maintained the residential zoning at the Middleton and Oak Island Drive intersection. This one, once again, is called out specifically in the comprehensive land use plan. There weren't any flood hazard impacts here. This is not in a AE zone. It's not in a VE zone. It's not even in that 0.2% annual chance zone. Didn't have DCM, Division of Customs Management, hadn't identified any particular wetlands on these pieces of property. They are identified on the storm surge map as being vulnerable to a category four or five storm. But if, if we had the, the ability to blow out that map, you would see that, that's pretty much the whole island. It's normal in that instance. But once again, subject to, you know, particular direct impacts, et cetera. So just something to keep in mind. That, that's really the, the long and the short of the impacts that we found on this property and the relevant comprehensive land use. Once again, it's a pretty short report on these.
Yeah, a little history about this intersection. Town council is going back to the 80s and 90s, knowing that someday there would be a bridge built at the end of Middleton Drive. And that what happened to that intersection would be important in terms of traffic patterns and character of the island and everything else. There was a decided and consistent desire to, the whole thing about maintaining the residential zoning. In other words, folks did not want to see that corridor rezoned to commercial and be strip business on lots that are not even as deep as the ones that we have in this commercial strip districts we have now.
Sure.
And the primary, first step in preventing that was to try and buy all the four corners. And so there were negotiations that went on with property owners for over a couple of decades, if not more, to ultimately get control of the, the corners. Now, the southeast corner, the lot that remains there, that single lot right there, yeah. I know there's been some discussion in the past about, because certainly the corner lot is that the little park we have there with the gazebo and the bricks and, and all that sort of thing. And there've been some discussion in the past about sort of expanding some of that park area or, or, you know, having some nature walks through that or what have you. I don't know that doing that would be inconsistent with the open space zone. Just having people be able to have access to walking through it, sort of nature walk kind of thing. So that seems like, but, and the, the little building that's there that's actually also we own is a pump station. It's the main pump station to get stuff off the island. So, so that's already taken care of. On the other side, you know, there again, it seems to me like an open space designation would be consistent with something like what's across the street in terms of, at, at a minimum, you might, you know, clean up the underbrush or have some nature walk through there or something like that. But just to leave it as is, protecting. Now, the, all the lots on the northeast corner, we actually purchased those when I was on council and caught a lot of heat for it. And there was, wasn't there a house on one, isn't there a house on one of those lots? Or there was, or some kind of building?
There wasn't that I could identify, but there, there may be something back in the brush or maybe something previous that's been removed.
Some kind of building there.
Was one or, one or even two. And I, I can't remember if they've been taken down or not.
Yeah, I want, I want to say there was a building there that maybe we were using for some kind of storage or something at one point.
I don't think we were ever using it for storage.
Okay, I think there was some talk about that.
I could be wrong, but I don't think we ever were.
Yeah, I don't know if that was ever taken down or not.
It was an old house.
Yes. But there again, it seems like that, that area in terms of some kind of park-like or whatever, in some future point, seems like a reasonable thing to do. But we have never been able to negotiate anything with the northwest corner, not for having not tried. But it just wasn't for sale to the town ever. But there again, like I said, in terms of the implementing action and the residential nature, the impetus behind that is to just not have commercial available there.
Yeah, makes total sense.
And, and I think over time, you know, with the second bridge opening up and, and that's, that is one of the first impressions that people get of the town, from that side at least, that it is important to keep that natural state there. But that's just my two cents and some history. Tim, I'll start on that side this time.
With that pumping station there, the chances of those being developed for residential uses kind of slim in the summertime, depending on the wind direction.
Well, now, there have been issues with that in the past and that is, that is... Yeah, I must be the only person in the world that went through there, you know, going to work over at BCC all those years and, and never smelled a thing with my window down. You know, so I just must have hit it at the right time, so.
Must have been in the winter time then.
Well, it doesn't matter. But anyway, I, I, I hear that's much better now. Okay.
One of the things that comes to mind is, is not being commercial. I've had people ask me this and it's really kind of sort of on the subject here. But right across on the, on the, on the northwest corner, right across from the middle lot on the northeast corner, there's like a business or they've got like a sign and a permanent sign. And I've had other people ask me this actually in the last month or so. How, how can they have a, anyway, it's just something, just a, just a note there. You can almost see the top of the sign.
Yeah, I know there's been a home-based business there for a long time and I don't know.
The guy that did the sign graphics, the, did the boat lettering and stuff, used to have his boat out there, you know, with the shark's teeth and all that stuff. But there's somebody else there now. They've got like a permanent sign erected for a, just an observation. I mean, I think you can actually see the sign on this picture. But no, I remember when we did, when we built the fire station, the people that long, own Long Beach Pier, you know, on Long Beach Pier, that's where that, on the corner lot came from. I was thinking that would be a good place for, you know, for like a training facility and a park, you know, like a, something, you know, for the fire state, for the fire department.
Yeah, not big enough.
Y'all grabbed it for the sewers, so.
Well, yeah. You got, you got 30 acres over across on, on Airport Road, you can do all that stuff.
So, anyway, but no, this is, I'm, I'm, this is, this is a good thing we're doing. So I don't have any questions on that. It's just, I didn't realize that the town owned those four lots across from the fire station there.
Yeah, that was, I don't remember exactly. It was sometime when Johnny was mayor, but yeah, we caught a lot of heat for that.
I vaguely remember that. I vaguely remember the, you know...
Yeah. Anyway, Bob?
My thoughts are that this should obviously not be residential zoning. However, it is a main intersection of the town. And I would imagine, you know, when we seek to find the highest and best use is open space, the highest and best use for, and if, if the town needed money to, to maybe fund some other open space, this might be a spot that could be commercial or law offices or, or something.
And that's the very thing that we have consistently, for as long as I can remember, not wanted any commercial there, period.
Well, I don't, I don't know why. So is the, the other, you know, as a planning director, I don't, I never want to put you on the spot. But, I mean, what, why wouldn't we, why would we want to have open space on a main intersection versus some commercial? But it's not... on a main intersection versus some commercial, but it's not big enough maybe?
Well, there, there might be reasons for aesthetic reasons, you know, just mainly, also preservation. So as someone mentioned earlier, that this is kind of the, when you hit the island, this is one, if you're coming in on that bridge, one of the first impressions you might have of the town, if the town wants to have the impression of being a place that values, you know, ecological things, then that's one thing. If you prefer to have, you know, certainly a lot of places do locate commercial and business nodes at major corridors and major intersections. So certainly, I mean, there, there's planning justifications for both views, in my opinion, and it'd just be up, and this is why we do this in a planning board and a town council, so there, there's an open discussion and, you know, consensus from there about, you know, what weighs more in the mind of the appointed and elected officials. But there's certainly, like you mentioned, justification for, for both ways of looking at it, yes or?
Yeah, I think, I think the impact on traffic patterns and the size of lots would be a negative for any kind of commercial you tried to, to put there. But again, we bought them for the, the, and tried to buy them years before that, but when we finally got the opportunity to do that, all of those were bought to keep it from being commercial. Now, you know, you can say why you have an open space in that area, why have open space all the way down the corridor for Middleton Avenue coming in from 211? And, and a lot of, of course, but to keep traffic moving through there and not have it interfering, not have commercial patterns interfering. That is, I know for a number of years, the way most people put it on council and off was, oh, we don't want to see a gas station on that corner. So anyway.
While you're on this side of the table. One question I would have, and this is just totally from a real estate, highest and best use and town, I can see the, this is just me, the, right across from the fire station there on those two parcels that are right on Oak Island Drive, you've got a double, it looks like above that on the two northernmost, you've got a double lot and then a single With it all being residential around that, would you want to pull that into something where it couldn't be built on residentially? I mean, I can see the corner and right, and on Northeast First and East Oak Island Drive, yeah, those two right there I can see, but the two above that, I don't know that you would be gaining by not allowing those to still be residential and somebody build, I mean, it's revenue for the town. If somebody wants to live on that busy quarter and there's plenty of people around them right there, you really wouldn't be losing anything by leaving those available for somebody to put houses on. Just, I'm just, just a thought, I mean.
Well, and there was a house on one of them there before. I'm not sure if it's still there. There was some, there was actually some conversation about having some for the residences on that side, configuring some kind of alley through there. Those, those houses on Middleton are going to continue to experience increases in traffic. I don't know why. You'd want to have a house on Middleton, quite frankly. But there are people who do.
And we've, I've got people that have bought on Northeast First Street.
But there, there again, there again, keeping that, if zoning that open space and not having it residential and not selling that for people to build houses on in the future, continues to reduce the conflicts with traffic with residential on that, on that area. I mean, if the town held the holster up on both sides, it would seem they just huh, but we don't and we're not going to and we don't have that kind of money and we're not going to spend it on that if we did. So, but we've got what we've got. And I, I think you always hold on to land, you don't get rid of it. It's bought and paid for. Just, Bob, you got anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Carrie?
So I've always subscribed to the principle that if you can or do control property at your front door, you should do it and you should hang on to it. I am not opposed to doing some kind of open space designation. If the town came up with viable use as a kind of welcoming feature to our island, then I think that's something that could be looked at. I don't feel as strongly about the northernmost parcel, but I'm also fine with including it in, in this group of six.
Obviously, I feel kind of strong of that.
Right.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I'm in agreement with, with Terry with respect to, you know, what the visibility is of those coming on to our island and those, those northernmost tracks. Again, like Terry, I agree that that northernmost parcel could be flexible in my view. But I have a question for Matt on the southeast and southwest parcels. I know there's, there's a sidewalk there going down Middleton, right? Has the town actually said that those, those will not be considered as new parking if there is a paid parking proposal coming forth?
That's definitely something to consider in your recommendation. Town council is going to do their review of, of town owned property as well, so obviously if they marked these for parking, they probably wouldn't accept your recommendation of open space on these parcels as well. But you're right, even the northern parcels, they're just a crosswalk away from having a direct beach access or pedestrian access anyway. So it's something to consider. That's partly why I, I mentioned that, just for y'all to keep that in mind as you make your recommendations, that, you know, as these paid parking deliberations continue, some of these parcels, you know, obviously ones that aren't deed restricted, are also going to be looked at at council for whether there's any potential there for, for that type of use.
And I just want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that, advocating it or recommending it. I was just wanting to.
I don't even want the, the words to be out there.
But I just wanted to make sure that if, if these, you guys are bringing these forth to us as to Bob's point, open parcels the town owns that are available and likely to be good open space.
Well, I can say that they don't currently have anything planned for them. That doesn't mean that in these deliberations, you know, we get direction from town council otherwise for, for these parcels.
So if we, if the, if the planning board wanted to restrict these for open space, then that would prevail over the town considering them for new paid parking type properties, right?
If the town council approved open space for these parcels, it's my opinion that.
How, how it ends up, you know, if.
They would have to rezone it or do something different.
If council has a mind to do something differently with them, then they won't rezone it or they can rezone it and then zone it something else later. So, yeah, but in terms, I would think in terms of, of paid parking, since you put that ugly word out there.
Sorry, Derek.
Out there.
Yeah, I'm going to have to put a few words out there myself about that, but this is not the time or the place. That, that would be south of Davis Canal, which this certainly is not. So you've still got, you know, you've just got that separation with the.
Right.
Beach area versus what have you.
Again, I'm not, I'm not advocating or proposing that be done. I'm just, I can see from a practicality standpoint, there's a, there's a sidewalk there going straight down to the beach, so it seems like that could come up. That's why I asked the question.
And if they designated this open space and then decided 10 years from now they could redesignate, it's not a forever and ever on being thing.
You know, I think a lot, a lot of what we do with this is just to go on record and make a statement at the time of how, how the town uses. That's not to say that 10 years from now, five years from now, next month, council doesn't decide to do something differently. But because there's so little, yeah, I know a lot of the history about it and a lot of, you know, somewhere down the road, so, so to have that statement made and, and that's something that is visible to everybody, it's not hidden in some, you know, minutes somewhere. This is how, what we consider to be the highest and best use of this property. And if else changes their mind down the road, then, you know, it doesn't lock anybody in because it's not a deed restriction, like, you know, we didn't acquire any of these with any deed restrictions.
So just to clarify, I mean, I'm definitely in support of the open space idea for these tracks with maybe that far northwestern tract as being, having some flexibility in my view.
Well, I would suggest if you, because that was all of a piece, I would suggest, since these are available, that we do, we don't piecemeal it, that we do all of it. And then if council chooses to do something to back off of that somewhere or not at all, then, then leave that up to them.
Okay.
But I think, I mean, what I, what I sense from the board is that there is a, a genuine desire to, strong desire to preserve what we can, that we have, that's appropriate for open space while we've got the opportunity to do it. If I'm not misreading that.
Do that is, open space, does that mean that it can't be touched or can the town landscape, I mean, they can?
Well, and, and again, I do think we need to, we, we need to have some discussion about what our open space zoning district, the wording of that and what is allowed in the table of uses now, what was in the table of uses before, and what do we think needs to be in the table of uses going forward? So there could be some text amendments in terms of open space, but basically it is very low to no impact. Yeah, you could do a nature trail through there, you could, could clear underbrush or something like that.
And I'm thinking if there's any live oaks or anything in there, because you go through Southport and you see the trees they have preserved forever. And they are so big, it would be nice to, I mean, that would be epic for somebody to drive over here, you know, 40 or 50 years from now and see trees that we saved.
So yeah, some things like, like that still be allowed.
Carrie, are you ready to entertain a motion?
I am.
I would make a motion then that we include these six parcels to be rezoned to open space.
And I will second that motion.
Okay.
Twice you got me.
I'm sorry, Tim. Got you, got you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all is in favor. All is opposed. Thank you, Bob. So it carries four to, four to one, yeah. And man, and, you know, I said something about the consistency plan, consistency statement before, we'll still need to get, before we send this forward to council, something with all the tax parcel numbers and the consistency statement and all that sort of thing. So this is just really a direction for you to, what to put in that final package.
We're, we're discussing it and you're making recommendations for how you'd like me to proceed with an actual zoning map amendment at this time.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, group three.
Group three, this is a few of the parcels we looked at last month, as well as some additional adjacent parcels. It's currently zoned R six and like the last parcels we looked at is identified on the comprehensive land use plan as being suitable for residential land use. Quite a few parcels in here outlined in red, four here, three, four again on this side, kind of spanned from 29th Street all the way over to 32nd along the, along the creek there. The rec center is to the north here, Oak Island Drive down that way. Flood hazard areas, these are mostly in the AE flood hazard area. Once again, that's a 1% annual flood hazard chance. The yellow is the, what's called the shaded X, that means there's a 0.2% chance of annual flood event there. Since it's AE, that means that there's not coastal wave action on these, like those properties at the point we looked at, this is simply just water impacting these potential properties.
Although Davis Canal can get pretty active.
Going into storm surge, once again, is, are identified on that storm surge map as potentially being impacted by a category one or two hurricanes, the lowest category we have available. You can kind of see the transition as you move inland on these maps, it's kind of orangey color, it's category three, and then the reds, four and five. This actually shows a pretty good gradient of how those are, are set up. But once they're all in the lowest category for that. Some wetland impacts on these properties, a mix really of salt, brackish, marsh, managed pine lands, freshwater marsh. I won't go through the kind of lengthy descriptions you have in your agenda packet of what those all mean. In my experience, the managed pine land is the, the most flexible because they're really just looking at what are the soil types and are there pine trees there? So that doesn't necessarily mean there's like a ground truth wetland on those piece of properties. So typically if there's any development, they have to go out and actually locate the, and, and verify these, these wetland designations on the ground. But that being said, it is identified as, by, in DCM as, as a wetland, so.
Matt, do you know if, because I know with some of the grants and things, particularly this middle section of the property where the rec center is, now I want to say maybe even the others, that there were some, was, were there ever any, did the town ever do a wetlands delineation on this property?
That's, that's a great question. I do not, I do not know the answer to that. Typically, you wouldn't necessarily do a delineation unless you were looking at it for development.
Well, and I think that may have been because of the, one of the, some of the overlooked trails and some of that stuff that was done back in the late nineties and with the grant that we had to do a lot of that in doing the walkover and through coming along that property and going on across. I just, something in my mind's trying to say that we've had that done at some point.
I can look into it a little bit more if you'd like.
Yeah.
And it may be that they, you know, delineated, delineated the areas where the walkover is actually going, but I'll, I'll check into that for sure. Yeah, if there's, I'll preface this too, if you feel the need for any more data, you know, this doesn't have to go to town council next month or anything like that. If, if y'all want additional information, let me know, we can, we can come back with that too, to the best of our ability. So those are the, once again, the identified environmental impacts of these property. I know we talked to some degree last month about the potential rec center expansion here and the town council looked at, you know, with the walkover there and some of those parcels that aren't in wetlands to the, the parking discussion as well as whether, you know, when town council reviews, these would be suitable for something like that. Just things to keep in the back of your mind as you discuss these, these particular pieces of property. Those are the ones that I, oh, those are the, the slides I had for you on this particular group.
All right, so I'm back to the other side, Carrie. What you got?
For me, I was in support of when we initially discussed these properties of protection as much as possible. So I think that's my only comment. I'm in support of protecting these.
We, we did get a look at a fairly schematic plan view of the rec center addition the other night. I know there was, there was some discussion among council about whether that was the appropriate size for the new building. So the only, only thing I would say is that, you know, I, I'm not sure what their program statement calls for in terms of required parking and how, and how much there, we're not taking away any parking, but I don't know how much more additional parking they'll need. That said, I'm still in favor of trying to go ahead and preserve these.
Yeah, and, and with, with all these, as we discussed last month, my intention is once those plans get firmed up a little bit more, I can bring this back in front of you and say, hey, this is what we know is going to happen out here more firmly, you know, is there any, you know, modification to what, what you're recommending or anything like that? We could certainly take that tact going forward.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's been my intent to, to keep this moving in tandem with that so that by the time that is set, we can do those concurrently.
Yeah.
Bob?
Well, in, in the same vein with my last vote, where we have this main intersection and we just decided to make it. where we have this main intersection and we just decided to make it open space. I don't, I don't know how much analysis, you know, find economic development and, and analysis has gone into making these decisions. As much as I'm a proponent of saving open space, I get the land behind the rec center. I've been back there, you know, at the rec center and I've gone through there with my bike. And I can see that being left as open space. But on the other side of the street, if you go eastward, that whole block, you know, people have houses there and they probably expected other houses to be next to them. And now they're going to have open space. They may appreciate that. What, you know, this brings you down to the canal. It's, I'm trying to figure out why this isn't perfect residential space. And then if you look at those last lots that run along the water, they're kind of these L-shaped lots. And I was wondering, are they just L-shaped lots because someone hasn't subdivided them yet? And they could actually be five lots, house lots or four house lots. And so we're not just eliminating three or four house lots, we may be eliminating many house lots here. So I wonder what the, you know, the, the analysis and the rationale and the economic sort of component to this to say, let's take six house lots that, that we already have six houses north of them and take them off the, off the potential. And, and yet we build on sand dunes out in the water and let, you know, it seems backwards to me. This, this is the place for houses and we'll build, we'll allow building and enable rebuildable lots and so forth out in the middle of the water.
And going back to that comprehensive land use plan, you know, it's designated on that land use plan as being suitable for residential uses, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So is that land on sand? And I would submit that I think I don't think this is suitable for residential. I also don't think the building on sand is suitable for residential. That's not the, I, I hear your contrast.
The logic, it doesn't follow, huh? But I've heard that logic elsewhere, so I try.
And I've heard, and I've heard that proposed right here too, to do something else. In any event, what else you got, Bob?
That's it, thank you.
Tim?
And those are eleven, that's between those, those are eleven lots right there on both sides of Southeast Thirty.
Well, and I think those L-shaped lots, unless they're water, you know, unless there's water, wetlands and so forth, they're just not subdivided yet and could be put, you know, let's say, one, two, three, four, five, maybe there.
Those, it looks like they've been combined or just, I don't, anyway, but yeah, I'm, um, the lot on Thirty-Second Southeast, which is just an arbitrary lot sitting there by itself, that's, I don't see why that would be. I mean, I agree with, with Bob. And then, like you were saying about the parking, if they expand the rec center, then you've got the two lots to the, well, to the west of the water tower out there, right, that one, that one parking there and then one lot below that. If you, if you did a separation of that lot to make those two lots available for parking. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, we need to preserve as much as we can, but it's, there's a lot of buildable lots there that I don't think would be. I mean, I agree, those, they're, they're residential lots. I mean, the highest and best use for those, especially when you've got houses right there around, like that Thirty-Second Street lot, Southeast Thirty-Second. I, I think there's some that could be not included in this and we still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish without removing residential lots that are.
And of course, let me say that I think the highest and best use for all of them is open space. And I don't care how many lots you can divvy them up into. And, and yes, if the rec center wasn't there and that land hadn't been given to the town, that's probably exactly what would happen to them. Which is the point of why the people, either, I think there was only one of these that we actually paid money for, and that might have been the lot to put the water tower on. But all of this land was donated to the town for the, although there are no restrictions in the deed. Part of the, let's start with the, over to the west. Matt, if you can kind, okay, so the, so this area in here, the two northernmost lots, where there's not, yeah, the, right, those two lots right there, there is a rather, if you go out there and look, the, the lot right above on Thirty-First, there's a house being built on that now. There's a steep drop off in there, so there's like, there's like a retaining wall against that lot from down there. But all of this area was, I can't remember if the beavers were on that track or if they were on the other one. But part, all of that came, well, almost all of these lots came along. And I had it in my packet from last month and I didn't bring it in terms of the dates of when the town acquired these. But most of it was done in ninety-eight, around the time with the Environmental Education Center grant. And so I would maintain that all of that section is most appropriately used and it buffers stormwater coming down through here, all that other kind of stuff. And it also, if you had, if, if it were, and granted, these days, it seems that there's nothing that's not developable somehow. If you buy enough wetlands mitigation credits or do some odd construction thing or what have you. But by having that block, that, the rest of that block down to Davis Canal certainly provides a buffer and protects water quality. But it also, you know, the less traffic you have, granted, there's some more on Thirty-Fifth than on Thirty-First, but the less traffic you have going up and down that road with the rec center, that, you know, there's conflict, reduces the conflict of having residential traffic conflict and with the recreation center traffic is another thing for having those lots going down to Davis Canal. If you skip over to the second, to the middle section, that one lot in that L up there could potentially be in need for that with the plans for the expansion. Don't think so. I know Bill Kraft was in here earlier and I'll talk about our site visit in a minute. Now, the water tower lot, I don't think it's actually the one that's designated there, the water tower's on the other side. That's just a shadow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the water tower isn't actually on that, that lot, yeah. That is free and clear right there. But all of these lots, that's where, you know, there's environmental overlook that goes around, water tower comes down and goes back in on the Davis Canal down, down at the end. All of that area was part of that Environmental Education grant that we got to do all of that work in the late nineties. And land was donated for that purpose. So to me, all of that, with the possible exception of that one lot on the top of the L, is, uh, and there were some, all that's grown up now, there's a, yeah, there's still a sign out there with the thing about the beavers. But there were a couple of walking trails that were originally put through that that were just straight walking trails, not the boardwalk like there is around the water tower. Now, the land on the easternmost, between Thirty-First and Thirty-Second, going up to the top on Thirty-First, the building right above that, that's one of the pump stations. And to me, the lot next to the pump station, if there were, is relatively high and dry. If there were a need for additional parking for the recreation center, that would be the prime spot for that. Perhaps that second one as well, but the, the big chunk going down to Davis Canal, again, not having houses in that area reduces, eliminates the conflict with residential and people coming in and out there in the rec center and that type of thing. And there is, may not be showing on the coastal management maps, but there are definitely wetlands in that large tract. And again, it provides water quality protection for, I could, there's a, there's one space in there that, that we did talk about at the time, but didn't get put in of, of having a short off of the, just before you get to the kayaks often there, just having a very short little walkover overlook area like there are on the other side around the water tower because of the nature of the lay of the land in there. So that too, in my mind at least, is, from the history, is part of that whole environmental overlook area. Now, the lot that's sort of sticking out over there on Thirty-Second, again, it's not in the deed or anything else, that was given to us as well. I'm not sure if, I don't remember if that was in hopes that the rest of it down the canal would eventually be, end up in the town's hands, or if somebody looking to as a way of giving it to the town to ensure that it stayed undeveloped. I, I just don't recall the discussions around that. But that was probably the most recent in terms of, I don't think we got that until twenty twelve or something. But anyway. So yeah, having said all that, there's really only two single lots out of that on the north side, one in the center, on the Thirty-Fifth Street side and one, the one next to the pump station on Thirty-First Street side, that I would feel comfortable leaving out for now because of the rec center expansion. Now, I did have a meeting with Bill Kraft, who's on town council, and with Thomas Creason, who is our chair of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We did a field trip and I walked them all over this property and talked about, and showed the, you know, a lot of people, it just, they just don't even notice the sign going into the rec center from Thirty-First Street side, that that's the Environmental Education Center. And it points to those overlooks and some other things. And that, the grants that we got to develop it for that I think shows the intent of keeping that as open space. But again, going, you know, doing a, doing a field trip, doing a walk, I felt like we had a good, that was productive field trip and that the Parks and Rec, I didn't want the Parks and Rec Board to, you know, we're coming up and, and to be left out of the loop in terms of that we were even looking at doing something with this. And so I know that Thomas said that he would, would talk to the board about it and he certainly seemed supportive of our efforts to rezonate as much as we could to open space without creating any conflicts with the proposal for the expansion. And, and I agree with that.
So are we at a point where we do a carve-out of several of these parcels, Madam Chairman? Is that in terms of this proposal?
Well, why don't we take them a block at a time?
Okay.
So the westernmost block.
Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
To, to your point, start at the western end and, and let's number them, right? One, two, three, four, so.
Yeah.
Maybe Matt, in it, taking notes can, so Matt, if you would point to the top one there in the west, let's call that number one, okay? So there we go.
Yeah, so one, two, three, four. You got, we got four parcels on that western block. And like I said, because of the lay of the land, the drop off, that all of that was, and the, the stormwater preserving water quality, not having, you know, that, that to me is, is the least desirable for any parking for the rec's expansion. And we have other parcels that are suitable and I think will be enough for that. But I think the stormwater issues are the biggest ones for me on that. So to me, we could recommend all of those four parcels for open space.
Agreed?
Agreed.
I would support that.
Okay. Do you want to do a separate motion for each section?
I think I can amend your, if, if you give me direction in your recommendation, I can, I'm taking, as Mr. Collins said, I'm taking diligent notes. So that one was a yes for everything on the west is my interpretation of the consensus.
One, two, three, four, there's a recommendation to make those open space.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so in the next, in the middle section, let's do one at the top. The big L is two. And then the other single lot is, would be three.
Okay.
My thought would be two and three would be the definite open space recommendations. And of course, the three, the single lot there on the water tower, not that it's conflicting with the water tower, but we already have those environmental nature trails, walk-throughs there. And also on two, we have some in that area as well. And that the, what we're calling parcel one would be the most appropriate for any parking expansion for the rec center addition.
I would recommend on that parcel right there, go down one, whoop, up a little bit, right there. If you do an instrument of separation from the water tower, the line that cuts right through the water tower, and go straight west with it and separate one more, that's probably fifty-five to a hundred and twenty, I'm gonna guess, to make that, to take the, to give those two lots to the rec center, just based on what we were saying a while ago, not doing a, we don't shake your head yet till I get done.
No, what, what I'm saying is because that section that you're there already has that environmental overlook pass through there.
Right, but if you leave that available to the council or to the town to do whatever expansion they're wanting to do with the, with the rec center, without getting in their way, I mean, the town, the council can do that later, I guess, if they want to re-designate that.
There's nothing on the expansion that's going farther than the three lots that aren't, that are above that lot number one.
I got a man here on my side.
I know, I know. See, okay, so see, Tim, see, see where the rec center is, right? So there's one set of double lots, you with me? There's two sets of double lots, there's three sets of double lots. Nothing in the rec center expansion plans go beyond about midway of that third set of double lots.
So Madam Chair, if I may, I, I would be agreeable to not including the northernmost lot in the open space. However, I would like to see it, because that block basically is, without the water tower, is basically a recreation block. I, I don't think that R six zoning is appropriate for just that one lot on that, in that block. So I would support not including it in open space, but I would like to make sure that it is preserved for future recreation. it is preserved for future recreation use if needed.
Yeah. I think that's. Okay.
My, my. Recommend combining it with the other parcel. You could recommend combining it with the other parcel.
Right. I mean, you could, you could combine that, the one next to it, and everything north of, up to Oak Island Drive as, as one parcel, which probably, quite frankly, if they're gonna, they should have done that when they did the expansion, because they don't meet the building setbacks, if they're gonna meet building setbacks and everything else in there.
Once they get into site plan review with me?
The town needs to do that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, that would be a way to do that. Would be to take that, what we're calling parcel one and the part, the, the three parcel adjoining to it and then everything north, putting all that into one parcel would, would address what you're pointing out.
I'd like to comment to Tim's point as well on subdividing that number two. Maybe we act and formulate our proposal based on, Tim, what we know now. And if the rec center needs that, they could come back and request that as part of their site plan, right? That could be requested later.
Or just let the town council consider, you know, I mean, we're just, the town owns those properties, they're not gonna get built on.
Right.
But yeah, make it easy on, make it easy on the development of the, whatever they're gonna do with the rec central, center property there, to not have to jump through the same hoop twice.
Well, but like I said, that, that, that little piece up there that just doesn't happen to have the little green over it for the pine, like, that piece is part of that walk through down there. Probably the environment, there's an environmental overlook into that piece of property. So that's why I wouldn't want to split it out. But council, again.
I mean, I'm good with, I support what we're doing, but I'm just.
So I got a yes on two and three for right now, is what I have from the question mark on number one.
Just some consideration on the future expansion of the rec center.
This is contingent on that, that's right. Nothing's gonna go forward until we.
You know, you know, when the, when this came before, when staff brought this before, planning board before, and I think the intent there was trying to follow the implementing actions in the land use plan about identifying environmentally sensitive open space and expanding where possible. They're just trying to do what the land use plan was telling them to do. And all of, all of those, all the parcels that you see were part of that. All those parcels were part, part of that. At the time, the town was looking at pretty much tearing down the rec center and doing some large scale, I'm not even sure if they would have been able to keep the water tower there if they put the size of building that they were thinking about putting the rec center, you know, in 2007. But all of that is certainly totally scaled back and recognizing we need to put something on that property that fits the property. It may not fit all of our recreation needs, but if we need a different rec center or different recreation facilities, we need to find some more land that's big enough for it and put it there. So there was a reluctance at that time because people were talking about, you know, doing elevations and extending buildings over that and all kinds of interesting things. But that's not where we are right now. Okay, so two and three, so the next section.
And one, two, three, four?
One, two, three, and four. One is the, again, it's located, it's, you don't have the drop off like you have over on the western block. But again, the, the, the one would definitely be something that could provide additional parking in the future. Lay of land, everything else. Two, in my mind, would be marginal. Three, I think definitely should be open space. And four, and that's, I think between three and four, in terms of some other, I think there's wetlands on four actually. And in terms of carrying forward the same thing with the other two blocks of having environmental overlooks or some kind of, some of the same types of walks and preservation for those wetlands in that area would be appropriate. But we'd have to get a, you'd have to get a, you'd have to have a wetland delineation done to verify that. So I would say for right now, three and four definitely, one, no, two's a maybe. But I think three is the most important piece of, of property and that is on open space.
Madam Chair, I would, I would support that notion. Again, I would be willing to let the northernmost not be included and potentially the parcel number, what we've identified as parcel number two. Again, however, I would hate to see, I would hate to see it remain in the R6 zoning if we're taken away. I, I don't want us to be shortsighted in terms of recreation needs in the future.
Well, one thing to do, and of course, that's the whole, I don't know what I'll get around to doing, the future land use plan map change again. I have multiple issues with some things on there in terms of what it might seem to speak to what the future intent is. But if there were some type of, and this would be adding a whole nother category, but at some point down the road, something that would be a, a recreation zone or, or an open space designated recreation area. There's a way of splitting out some of your open space that we don't have that could speak to that, or they're not meant.
I, I think the point that y'all are getting to is, is there some other type of zoning or land use category that we either have or need to make for these types of properties? And I can definitely look into that a little bit more as we continue these discussions for sure. I don't know, but I mean, we'll have to do some research before I, I'm ready to recommend a whole new zoning category be added to our UDA. But it's definitely something we can look at and keep, keep cracking on for sure. Because it does make sense to have a, a zoning that would be for, for town recreation type uses, but maybe not other uses of property.
All the parks, the, you know, something like Templeton Park.
Yeah.
Which came very close to getting sold.
Five, a one, a no, two, question mark, three yes, and four yes, if that's the consensus of the board.
Yes.
Ken, Bob?
I'm, I mean, you got that one arbitrary lot over there on 32nd Street, that, you know, that one right there. And I know the, the house just above that, I showed that house. And we walked from there straight over to 31st Street and between the, the pump station and the water tower. So I guess if that's wetlands, or if there is some issues with that as far as buildability, I could see.
Now, the one, the one side that you're talking about.
Yeah, the ones, the one, the, the one single lot right there on 32nd, just below that.
You walked through there?
There, yeah. I could see where maybe at some point, depending on how that was developed, maybe that would be a throughway from 32nd Street for traffic or something. I don't know, the people would want that to happen, I'm just thinking way ahead.
See, I wouldn't want that to be a throughway kind of thing.
So I think we should remove that from this.
You walked right into that one.
No. And then again, and thinking ahead, if they're gonna build, I don't know if that's gonna be a rec center that they build there, because again, if, to me, the rec center, to me, the rec center would be better situated right here on 46th Street, right here where all of the rec facilities are that we, there you go shaking your head again. And depending on how you swap wetlands out to be able to build here.
You realize that, don't you?
What?
I'm just messing with you.
So, yeah, well, it's working. I'm so kidding with you. So, you know, if that's something that we can, whatever you do with the state, because that's above my pay grade right now, to be able to build or to use wetlands by saying, okay, we're not gonna use these, and that's a very gray area to me. That might be something that we could, we could use to maybe relocate the rec center where it would be more appropriate, in my opinion. So that, just that one lot right there, to remove that from, and that could be, if it's not wetlands and it is buildable, then,
You could change it.
Then that's revenue for the town, so the town can go back and redo this.
Exactly.
With a lot of public oversight if they do that. Yeah, so that's the only thing.
Now, that is the thing. That is the very thing.
But if you don't walk into it, you don't have to walk out of it.
No, 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 no.
So if that lot was not included, that would be the only consideration that I would say, is that one single lot. The rest of these lots on 31st Street, I mean, oh yeah. Yeah.
Okay. You know, basically, basically what is.
I'm gonna start shaking my head.
You keep wanting to, well, that's, that have no effect on me, you realize that, don't you know me long enough? Okay, so, so, so basically, what, what is, you know, the kind of recreation source of things that we have out here? What, what the, what the proposal, and what I got out of discussions from the meeting the other night, I mean, essentially, as I said, and much to, to Bill and Thomas when we were doing our little walk around there, I mean, the facility that's there now and what will be expanded in that is essentially making that a fitness center. Which is a little bit different from what you might, you know, do the whole recreation center thing. But recreation center, you know, we're getting, I guess the survey is out, I hope it is. Take, make sure you fill out the rec survey that's.
When was that, when was the rec center built?
The first half of it was built in 1985. Second half of it was built 10 years later. And it was built, the original, 10 years later. The, the,
Ninety-five, okay.
The ori, the original, the first half was built in such a manner as expecting to, yeah, we can't build the whole thing now, we're just gonna build half of it, but we know exactly what we're gonna get when we get enough money to do the rest of it. Yeah.
So that was built in 85. That was before we acquired the field back here, because we used to use it for the horse ride from.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then we ended up buying, the town bought the field mid 90s, 95, 96, or something like that. And it wasn't until after that that we only had these two tennis courts. Then we got more tennis courts, and then more tennis courts, and now we got.
Yeah, some, some of the tennis courts, the original basketball court where the parking lot is, we redid and all that.
And the town garage was right here.
That was back in the 70s.
But yeah, so the need for the rec center has grown more to here than it is, that's more of a community center down there. That's, that's my point.
But what I'm saying is it, it's a fitness center, is what it's turned into.
Yeah.
Because the way that they're gonna redo, go, go look at the tape on council meeting about what's, what's on the table for do, for doing with, not only renovating that building, but the addition as well.
Right. So I mean, I, I would just say that one lot right there, that's good revenue for the town at some point. And if they pull that into this, then what will they have to do to end up turning around and taking the money off of that and putting it somewhere else if they sell that lot? So that would be my only consideration. I mean, I'll, I'll vote yes for the whole thing, with that just being my only comment, is that would be something I would consider, maybe not including in this to make it easier down the road. And if it's wetlands, it's gonna be a non-issue anyway, because nobody's gonna be able to build on it.
Oh, yeah, they'll buy some wetland mitigation and, you know, they'll, they'll buy wetlands in Montana and fill it in and put a house there. But anyway, so, so how do you feel about number, number one is the lot next to the, we're saying leave that out?
That is not a very marketable lot.
The lot behind, the, that could be parking, the lot next, the next lot, that single lot, that's potential parking for the rec center, but it could also be, don't know how much parking they'll need.
Well, and you also don't want to forget you got that walkover that takes you over to the, to the little managed pine land area then. And all the dead pine trees, that lovely pine that's, that sign that's dead as a hammer. So yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a really good street end right there, because you got, you can walk over to the beach. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, that was just, my only comment is that one lot over on 32nd Street.
Okay, so the one lot over on 32nd, you want, you'd prefer to leave out of the open space?
I mean, what the town will gain from that one lot over there that's kinda off the beaten path for everything that's going on.
Well, like I said, unless, as I suspect, there's some wetlands that are sort of tied to the larger parcel that's on the, that does, that I know has wetlands on it. And I just don't remember the, the conversation of why that came to the town in the first place. I think it's a combination of wetlands and wanting to know that be preserved if the town had it, feeling like it would be.
Did the town get it before the sewer came in? I mean, that might be exactly what it was, somebody might have thought, well, we can't build on it anyway, we'll just donate it.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. Anyway.
I think that was later. I've got, I had the notes, and like I said, in my packet from last meeting, but I don't have them anymore today.
So Madam Chair, if we, if we left lots one, two, and three, would there be consensus on leaving lot four alone? Pending review of whether it actually is in the wetlands or not?
Yeah, so lot one, we're gonna say leave it, well, lots one and two is really what we're looking at, is leaving that for potential parking, but want to make sure that it's continued to stay of recreation.
Correct.
Three is open space.
Open space.
And then four would be a pending, some further information gathering about what's there and how we came to, what they expect, what, what, what was the thinking at the time? But more importantly, I think, is there some wetlands connected in that area, in the timing on, on that?
Okay. And also relative to that lot, if you kind of look at the geography of what we're deciding to propose here, leaving four in it, kind of leaves a consistency of a line going across there, based on what we're proposing for open space, leaves some consistency in the, kind of the, the geography of it, it appears.
The lay of the land, despite where the white lines may have gotten drawn by somebody in the 50s or 60s or whatever.
Okay.
I got it.
All right.
I'll read that back.
So that brings us to group four.
Continue, I've noticed some tired eyes. Does anybody need a break for anything as we plug along? We've been at it almost two hours. If not, I'm good to go. I'm good. I'm good.
Let's go.
All right.
Go, let's, let's, let's wrap this up.
Okay. Group four, one parcel located along Country Club Drive, is currently zoned R20. It was dedicated to the town as recreational open space, the Brunswick County Register of Deeds. And it's identified in the comprehensive land use plan as being suitable for low-density residential. Special flood hazard areas, well situated in the AE 1% flood hazard area. Once again, it's in the inundation category for a category one or two storm impact. And finally, there's a little bit mapped out, there, there could potentially be more on the site of salt brackish marshland identified by the Division of Coastal Management. For wetlands, it's kind of like right, this little bit of purple in the top corner back here. Once again, there could be greater impacts directly on the parcel that they just didn't map. Once again, there could be greater impacts directly on the parcel that they just didn't map out or didn't, haven't ground-truthed yet. So, once again, this is a, a few environmental impacts on here, certainly at risk for some hazards for us to consider. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions we might have. This one's, in my opinion, fairly straightforward.
Madam, I think it's your turn to start.
That looks like a no-brainer to me.
I would think this could be open space for sure, it should be protected.
Very, that's absolutely okay.
Agree.
We'll make it simple. Do it. Add it. Now, having said all that, there are, and I think I mentioned, there are two other spots. Yeah, I have the tax records too, but, but these were, I didn't even look at the tax records. There are two other spots that, like I said, I, I've sort of made a mental shortlist.
Sure.
And there are two other spots, and I actually went this morning and to County GIS online and brought up the tax parcels. One is the, there's two parcels that we have on Southeast 66, it's 250 BL-02801 and 250 BL-02802. Those are on Southeast 66. They were part of the couple of phases of Turtle Creek subdivision in that area that were open space with the subdivision dedication. And so that would, I, I know, and they're right, that, you know, sixty, sixty-six doesn't go, the street doesn't go all the way to the beach. And there was some discussion when the Orchard came through, which I brought up, about it would have to be researched, but I don't think there's anything, I think there's potential at least, for even though those were part of that subdivision dedication, the way it was worded and the way the covenants are and everything else, theoretically, those could be sold. But to, talking about selling those to pay for putting a walkway across to the, the beach there. There was certainly a lot of opposition to that, and I don't think council is inclined to go that way, which suits me fine. But I would think that that would be another area we want, another couple of lots we want to look at in terms of whether, I don't know if that's something that's, you know, designated for some of these other things, but
I mean, I, I can definitely, now that, if you have the parcel numbers and stuff, I, I can definitely report back to you with
Yeah, like I said, those, those are the two parcel numbers for that. The other thing that, and, and I'm sure there's been some discussion and there were some intents, I know they've looked at putting the, the parcel that's here on, on Southeast 46, across from the pickleball courts. It's 233 ME-017. There was even some thought that that would be the site for the skate park at one time. I, and I think there was some discussion about creating some parking for St. James people to be able to come over and play pickleball. Just saying. In any event, it strikes me with all of the recreational outdoor activities that we have
Here.
Here.
Yes.
And actually, it's here. It's back there. You're, you keep pointing to the parking lot. You keep pointing to the parking lot.
You're gonna make me get up and look at that one, don't you? Well, Cheryl Coleman's lot was right there, so it's right here.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, so that parcel, to me, with all of the active outdoor noisy recreation we have.
Pickleball's the noise.
Pickleball, I can hear pickleball at my house three blocks down the road. It seems to me like that strip of land, its highest in best use is as a buffer for the residential areas behind it.
Give me that parcel number one more time, make sure I got it right.
Uh, 233 ME-017. And there are, in fact, some wetlands at the bottom of that. But I'd just like to request that those two areas be looked at as a group five and six, maybe, as we're going through this process.
Okay, so make sure I got the, both of these right. The first one's on Southeast 66. It's 250 B as in boy, L-02801. And then also 802, that's the last three for the next one. And then 233 M as in mat, E-017, is that correct? I got them.
Yeah.
Madam, Madam Chair, I, I also have two additional parcels that I've found that belong to the town. They are at the waterway end of McGlamry, McGlam, McGlamry. And I rode down there this morning. There are actually four vacant parcels on the end of, uh, end of that street. The two closest to the waterway are privately owned, but according to the tax card there, they may be underwater because they basically have no value. I think they're listed as Right. The town owns the next two parcels, and under highest and best use on the tax card, they're shown as single-family residence slash marsh. They are zoned R-9, and under our future land use, they're shown as medium-density residential. The fifth lot on that street is now being built upon. They're, they're constructing a new house there that's being framed up. So I would like us to look at those two lots and see if there's anything we need to do with those. And I have those numbers, if you'd like.
Is that in the area where the there's a rescue station back there?
Oh, the
I think I know where you're talking about, the very northern end of
The maintenance yards back there.
Yeah, there was, there was a, there was a rescue station.
I think I know which parcels you're talking about, yes.
Okay.
If you have the parcel numbers, I'll write it down just to make sure.
I do. 250 CG-065 and 064. Combined, it's about three-quarters of an acre.
Can you pull GIS up on the big screen?
Not.
What?
I mean, I probably can, but I'll probably mess up everything that's happening on there right now.
Oh, I'll listen. Yeah.
Karen? No, I was just gonna, back to the Southeast 46, this parcel here near Town Hall. I thought that when the discussions were going on about the potential, the skate park being a potential site for that, that there was some conversation, or someone said there was wetlands there. So is that your point, Madam Chairman, is that it should be protected?
My point is too far, yeah, there is some wetlands there, but again, it's not something you can't buy some trade-off for. But my other point is buffering, having a buffer on that area.
Okay.
And not, and not having something else over there that adds to the coming and going already.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I, I'm reasonably sure that when that was purchased, when the opportunity came and that was purchased, that it was looking for expanding some of the facility types of things. But I'd like to at least have the conversation about keeping it like it is.
Okay, understood. Sorry, Terry.
I think a skate park would be kind of noisy behind the residential.
Well, what's there now is noisy, even with the buffer, but still, you know, you know. But, yeah, but we've got the sidewalk going down there and to, you know, have other things. Now that that's there, it just seems like, I just think while we're looking at that, that was another spot that came to my mind as something that might be good to preserve in its natural state.
Perfect, okay.
See where it, where it goes.
We'll look at them next month. We'll keep riding and rocking.
Yeah, Matt, the other thing I'd like for you to look at for next month, I won't belabor the point since we are the hour is getting on in the day. If you would take a look at our, the text part of our open space district, and also look back to what that wording was pre-UDO. And look at the ta, look at the uses, I mean, I've made some notes about writing down, you know, look at the uses that we had in that district before. Look at the uses we have now. The one thing that's actually on the list now that strikes me as just odd, athletic fields is permitted use on the open space. Whether that's a mistake or what was going on with that, I don't know. But the other thing that jumps out at me is that the distinction between the two, and granted, you may or may not want to, you know, you might at some point, like on this last group that we looked, last parcel we looked at, there's nothing in our code anywhere in the UDO. But it was in the open space before, where you'd have any kind of public docks, piers, water access. But you'll see that when you look at the list of uses that we had before the UDO and what we've got now. And I think while we're doing this process, at least looking at those pieces in this context will help us. You know, that's part of the audit as well. But I think we need to get all that together. And so if you could, could bring something back to us along those lines of what you're, what you're seeing there and what's there versus how that matches with what we're trying to do with these properties.
Yeah, so, and, and just for my clarification, are you looking at further restricting some of those uses, or, that's, I guess, my question? Or, that, when you mentioned the public water access, is that something that's now gone that, in your opinion, or in the board's consensus?
Well, and some of the
Should be there.
The other thing in the context, I mean, the biggest, the biggest piece of property that we've got zoned open space is all the marsh and Davis Canal, and certainly our walkovers and some of our accesses in there, may not be on, have
I got you.
Have those kinds of things. So I want to make sure that our open space, wherever it is, is consistent with what we allow there.
I think I got you.
Got that?
Yep.
Okay.
You got that?
I think so. That I think.
All right. Okay, so we'll be hearing more from that next month?
That's, yeah, that's absolutely right.
Thank you, Matt. And if, I think there were 157, 156 town-owned parcels I found when I went I'm still gonna, you, you realize I will go through every single one of them and look at it myself, right?
I'm with me.
But I, I think
Keep on trucking.
I think we're, we're made good headway in progress. I appreciate everybody. Appreciate what you've done on this so far.
Thanks.
I'm looking forward to what you bring back to us next month. So that's our old business item, new business. Looking at the planned unit special zoning district.
We're not voting on any of those items, just gonna
No, it was the recommendation, no, it was we
Oh, yeah, I don't know if you made a recommendation on that last parcel.
Which last, what?
The group four?
Ah, group four. Thank you, you're right. We didn't do an actual motion.
We didn't vote on group three either. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure we had to, otherwise they lay at the table, right? But I think group three didn't have a vote.
You did the other two, so if you, if you wanted to, you can certainly. Once again, we're gonna bring back a formal action for you, so.
Matt, I apologize. Did we really vote on group three? I thought we did only one and two.
We had consensus on three.
We did.
Lisa, if you?
My understanding was there was a consensus for group three, which is, since we're bringing it back to the board anyway, consensus in my mind is fine.
All right, well, if you don't mind, I'd like to be recorded as no on group three, so I apologize if I missed a vote.
Consensus is not a majority, so, yeah.
Okay. I, I'd be glad to add that in there.
Thank you.
Catch, Bob. Thank you. Appreciate that. Are we ready for the next?
Ready, Bob?
Okay. Okay. Uh, this is item 2.1 in your text, in your agenda packet. This is a proposed text amendment. Chairman Royal requested that the planning board consider initiating a text amendment on the UDO. Proposed the movement would remove the planned unit development special zoning district from the UDO. Staff drafted an alternative for you that you can consider in this request that would leave the PUD language, but require that future projects not use that process. And we'll get into why we wanted to draft that alternative as we go through the presentation here. Uh, so the PUD, you have the ordinance description in your packet, and just some bullet points that's intended for large sites with a mixed use according to an overall approved site plan, allows great flexibility and dimensional standards, doesn't require rigid separation of uses. That's a typo on this, since they currently won PUD zoning district in the town's jurisdiction. Uh, that was approved by town council at their March meeting. That's commonly referred to as the Williamson Tract. So that is a recently approved PUD zoning district. You may notice that there's other planned unit developments in the town, but those predate this zoning district. They actually have what's called a special use permit that's granted by town council. So this proposed amendment would affect the zoning district. Wouldn't affect those existing special use permits. We can't go in and change the ordinance in some way to take those away. They, they remain with the property as well, so.
Bless you.
Excuse me. Oh, boy.
So the chair's recommendation was to, to strike through the existing references in the PUD zoning district. Staff's recommendation would instead modify the intent statement of the PUD to do two things. One, to provide clarity on how existing PUDs are treated, because we have one, a very large one, that was just recently approved. And then clarify that new projects use conditional zoning district. Conditional zoning is a, a very useful tool, in my opinion. It, it allows the, the town a lot of flexibility. There's clear statutory authorization for conditional zoning districts. So it really is kind of a, a good direction for us to go. In my understanding, in the past, the, the existing PUDs have been treated as somewhat of a hybrid, which is kind of a lot of jurisdictions kind of do it, of a traditional and a conditional zoning, because you have a overall kind of conceptual master plan that's approved with it. But it's not necessarily a strict conditional zoning district. But that is a, a useful tool that we can continue, that we can further encourage. The issue with, if we strike through all of the PUD zoning language, is when we do have a large PUD, not only is there a question of whether that then creates that as a legal non-conformity, because it's no longer referenced in our ordinance, also, large projects like this, in my experience, take many, 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 many years to build out. Future planning boards, future planners, if there's no reference to it in the ordinance, it's very confusing for how they might treat that specific zoning going forward. I actually worked in a jurisdiction that had that exact setup, and it was very difficult to manage that PUD without extensive, extensive historical knowledge of what had been done in the past, so. And that one had been going for thirty years prior to me even getting there, and was still, still kicking while I was there. So the, the intent, I think, is right to move us in the direction of conditional zoning as a town moving forward for these large projects. But we would prefer the alternative that staff has drafted. I know that there's been some discussion with Wes as well with this. I worked in concert with Wes to, to draft this staff alternative. So it was, also, when he had mentioned this to you a couple of times, that was the, the direction that he was also considering going as well.
Yeah, and, and actually, I hadn't gotten that far in the audit documents, but
Yeah.
when you get to that, that is, what's here is, is what's recommended. And if I, if I, I think I understand what this says, does, if it does, then I'm, I'm in full support of, of the revision of my original request.
Sure. Yeah, I, I mean, it's, and frankly, Yeah, I mean, it's, and frankly, when Wes sent me a draft, I actually firmed it up some to require that new projects go through the conditional zoning district, where what he had worked on was to strongly, you know, encourage that they do that. But I think the direction, you know, that, like I said, the PUD is kind of a weird hybrid. It creates kind of an administrative problem for the town, in my opinion. There's not as clear of a statutory authority for that type of zoning versus conditional that's clearly laid out in 160D that we have the authority to use.
And now that we have done the work, did the work last fall to get what I think is a pretty solid conditional zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. It, yeah, I won't belabor the point anymore. In my opinion, it's consistent with some of our adopted plan guidance for how to amend the UDO and how to consider creating the UDO. Conditional zoning is certainly a more, simpler, more flexible regulatory setup. It's a clear review procedure that has, the chair just mentioned, the town just laid out recently. It removes that PUD option as an outdated standard, and it removes that confusing or contradictory requirement. Where is it a conditional zoning? Is it not? Is it something else? That's a little bit of an open question. As far as reasonableness, you know, staff's opinion is that our draft would provide a clear standard for future development of these types of projects, as well as existing PUDs. As I mentioned, with a very large project, you don't want to turn that into a legal nonconformity, because it's gonna be a nightmare 20 years from now when somebody goes, where's that document that Matt wrote about this phase of this development? And how did the ordinance read back then, and how should we treat it? It can get extremely difficult, in my opinion. So I have a recommendation for you here. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. This kind of goes under, in my opinion, it can go under kind of a maintenance view of just clearing out old stuff in the ordinance and making sure we're clear on how we want to move forward. But I know Chair Royal presented this, so if she has any further discussion or clarification she'd like.
Yeah, okay, so, what I had proposed was just striking it out everywhere. So we're not considering that with staff's amended proposal. So the only thing that would be changed would be what we see on page 41, correct?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay, and so, what this does, in other words, we've got what we've got. We have one PUD zoning district. And I'm still hopeful that that may even someday go away, but in any event, so this does two things. One, it clarifies, although since it's a change, I'm not, it clarifies what happens with that existing district.
That's correct, yeah. So we have existing standards for what counts as a major or a minor modification to an approved plan.
Right.
This applies those standards to that PUD. So if it's clear in the ordinance that it's a minor modification, or if it's a major, it would go down the right procedure.
Right, so that's not, that's not a change in what was already there when that zoning district was put there. It's just, it's just stating what that interpretation would have been had that come up. So we're just, we're just clarifying there.
That's correct.
So that's not a...
Yeah, that is how we would proceed now.
Right. Right. And then, so anything for new, similar for, anything new will go, in other words, we've got what we've got. We've got one PUD special zoning district, and this says, we won't have any more.
That's right.
Anything, anything that...
Anything that would fall under this, under this designation would fall under conditional zoning instead.
Anything that you need to do something that you would look at this, you'd have to go to conditional zoning.
That's correct. That's correct.
And this also states that the formally approved project, see, I'm the priest, that's sort of a little bit of a rewording of what's there.
It is.
I'm fine with what this is. I do have one question, though, more in terms of what happens with the PUD that we have. Because when that kicks into the subdivision process, so, is the subdivision ordinance that we had in March the subdivision ordinance that will be used for that project? Or will it be whatever, if we make modifications to the subdivision ordinance between now and whenever something's done on that property, is that gonna be what rules?
Sure, there's two ways you can do that, right? You can, if you make modifications to the ordinance, and this would be, you know, the direction of town council, whether they want to include some type of carve-out for existing projects, or whether they want to say this is how it is going forward and everything, and it shall fall under that. You know, I don't think we've made any changes since then, so as it is right now is as it shall be. But for consideration for stuff going forward, you know, you're right. If there's, I've worked in jurisdictions that did it both ways, where they said, this is for everything, even existing projects that haven't been fully built out yet. In some places, it said, well, we want to have a carve-out for these existing projects.
I think what, the way that I've understood, the way, certainly the way I understand the clarification on the PUD zoning district is the, if there were uses that were part of that approval process, and we change something about those uses, that doesn't, they're sort of, they have vested rights in those uses. But they don't necessarily have vested rights in following the same subdivision ordinance.
Certainly, and it would depend on how the conditions are laid out for that particular district. I believe in the case of Williamson, that there was some consideration that those conditions are, for uses in particular, were, as they were laid out in the ordinance. So it really depends on a case-by-case basis. But the procedure stuff, as far as I know, is set up to follow our procedures right now as they're laid out. So the subdivisions would be, follow all of our regular procedures.
Madam Chair, question? Matt, I noticed in the prior language, there was a five-acre minimum for the PUD. And yet, in this 6.3.16 revision that you suggest, I don't see that there's, is there a need for any acreage minimum?
Well, if this is gonna, if we've got what we've got, and then we're not gonna have any other ones, then...
That's correct. So it would fall under whatever conditional zoning minimum there is.
Okay, okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Good, good question.
It's really kind of an open question as to whether you want to make sure it's a large parcel or a small parcel. Let's see, and it's kind of at the policy level as far as you want to reserve certain projects for larger things or smaller.
Terry, you got anything?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on this last, the last couple sentences in the staff's recommendation. So, anything new falls under conditional zoning. Anything, the formally approved project is subject to what was established at that time. And then, any requests for modification, then, any requests for modification, that would go, that would then fall under conditional zoning? Or are they safe forever?
So, what that statement is trying to say is, if town council, when the PUD had certain uses approved, and they wanted to change those uses, then they would go up through our modification procedure as a major modification. That still goes to planning board and town council. It doesn't shift them automatically over to a new zoning district. But it still has the same public meeting requirements as, it would be very similar to a zoning map change, where you have, you know, public hearings and advertisements, et cetera.
Okay.
But we couldn't just switch the zoning without them recommending it, or requesting it.
Bob? Following on Terry's question, if I were to rephrase that, existing PUD districts can, you know, forever request to have changes done with regard to the old PUD rules? And, or they can go and ask for conditional zoning change, but they still have the PUD, the existing, the previously existing PUD rules that they could ask for changes?
They could ask for changes, but it wouldn't go through public meeting and hearing procedure subject to the rules of the ordinance. It wouldn't just be like, you come ask a change, and I say, sure, great.
I appreciate that, and that's just what Terry asked, right? But what would be the problem? How kind of a problem are we creating if we say the PUDs are gone and conditional zoning applies, you know, typically?
So your question is if we remove PUDs totally from the ordinance?
I don't see the major problem. You know, whenever you make a zoning change, you create nonconforming, you know, pre-existing and so forth, uses. So, I'm just kind of wondering, how big a problem is this? And if I missed it, I missed it. But I don't see the major problem that Madam Chairman was creating with her, with her motion.
It's a tremendous problem when you create a 5,000-acre legal nonconformity. It's a tremendous problem when staff doesn't have guidance for future changes of an existing zoning district. Those are major problems.
Okay. Thank you.
But if I could just make a comment to Bob and Terry's point. I don't think, I don't think it's the town's intention, and certainly this board, to restrict mixed-use
That's correct.
plans, projects, whatever. I come from a community where we had several of those, and they're very nice for the community if they're done well and they're managed properly. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public, that I think, I don't think we're sitting here saying that we're discouraging mixed-use projects at all. That's not, but just better controls around them are important for us.
Certainly, conditional zoning is, is an excellent tool for doing just that.
Understood.
And, and having a project that is better planned and managed by going through the conditional zoning project.
Absolutely. This is, this is simply a more modernized procedure to get to those same goals. That's right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Tim? Okay. Well, and the, some are ready to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve and the consistency statement.
That's the staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Terry? All in favor? Yes, unanimous. All righty. Thank you, Matt. Okay, so that concludes our business. Board member reports. Where did I start last time? Carrie, I'm gonna start with you.
I guess, not to open a can of worms, but I think,
Don't.
Another can of worms. We have quite a few of those, right? No, I'm just thinking, in thinking about the UDO audit in our last meeting surrounding that, and sort of the talking about the, the exercise to go through the audit and how, and the outcomes, it seems to me, as I looked at our schedule, we're gonna have six different meetings over six months in order to complete this audit. And it seems like a pretty long timeline for something that's so important for the town. And in my opinion, two things. One, I like things to have a sense of urgency, because I think what gets worked on and, you know, and prioritized is important to get done. And the other thing is that I think that having something like a workshop or two where we're just dedicated solely to working through this whole proposal and get it completed in a fairly short timeframe could be more effective, both from a momentum perspective as well as a consistency perspective as you're looking through the different sections of the UDO. So, I just wanted to maybe throw out there my thoughts that, or question, is it possible that instead of these monthly meetings spread far apart over a six-month period, can we compress that schedule somewhat? Maybe dig into it in a couple of workshops with, you know, a longer timeframe and get it wrapped up more quickly?
So, yeah, I can definitely speak to that. Under the contract for the audit, you have two more meetings for this planning board specifically. You have one scheduled for October 12. We spoke with Mr. McLeod, and we're gonna float the next meeting, actually, at this one, for a potential date of November 9.
Okay.
So that sense of urgency is there, because it's actually two more meetings that are under contract to have happen. Now, that being said, I spoke with Mr. McLeod on many occasions. They're, the Council of Governments, they're not gonna leave us in the lurch or anything like that. They're here to help us. So, and then, those two meetings, I know we had board training for our new and existing members last month. Those next two meetings are to work on the audit. That there's no other agenda items that we have planned or scheduled or anything like that. So hopefully, that's a good answer to your question. Where are those next two meetings? If November 9 is fine, we'll have them scheduled. And then we'll have that time dedicated solely to going through Wes's recommendations and getting the planning board's feedback on those items. Is that helpful at all?
Sure, but I don't know, I don't know if the time allowed will accomplish the feat in two more meetings.
Sure.
Based on what we got done in the last meeting, I'm not sure that only two more meetings are gonna get our work done.
That's right. And that's why I threw out the caveat that...
Unless we give a longer timeframe, right?
That Wes is not going to leave us hanging or anything like that with a half-finished review of his recommendations.
And, and I would remind Wes that, I know the contract says four meetings. And counting the introductory meeting, which was relatively short, and having half of our last meeting with training, doesn't seem to me to count.
I think that's kind of our point to that.
Yeah. So I would say we have three more full meetings.
Sure.
But...
Yeah, what would take us what into December, and we still haven't completed the work, right? That's my concern. It's like, I think, I think council wants to hear something from us more quickly.
Well, the contract is actually for a year, so whatever, whatever that says. And I'm certainly not trying to belabor or delay either. I know that there are, we're not the only game in town to schedule that for Wes's schedule, as well as some of our own schedules, so.
And that's correct. And certainly, I can pass any type of feedback you have back to Wes. I mean, the short end of it is that the COG is the service provider for this. So any type of feedback on, you know, scheduling meetings or process improvements or anything like that, you know, we'll be happy to forward along to him to take under consideration as well as their process going forward. He's, I will speak that he's done many of these. He's doing them for other jurisdictions, like right now, so we're not the only ones. He does have some experience in this matter. He has, I have a lot of faith in him to get you guys steered in the right direction and moving forward, for sure. I think that the last meeting with the training, as Chairman mentioned, the introductory meeting, you know, and then towards the end of the meeting, we started, when we drilled down on Wes's recommendations and provided feedback to those, we started, you know, having some forward momentum. So I think those are good things to keep going forward as well, for sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't question the commitment of the Council of Governments and their support in the project. I just want us, as a planning board, to make sure we understand that we're gonna have to have some long meetings and get this done.
I agree.
And, and Matt, because I know when we were, our last meeting, I think we could have gone on, but even Wes is like, you know, I've got to be somewhere. So we need to know exactly how long our meetings can be on those days from Wes's standpoint. Not to say that we can't talk without Wes here, which may be something else that comes up at some point. But we need to, he needs our feedback.
Yeah, absolutely.
Finish what he's contracted to do for us. So, yeah, knowing how, I think that will be helpful for us to say, okay, so, so if we're meeting on the 12th, we're starting at 10, what's, what time do we have to quit because he won't be here?
Yeah.
And the same thing if we're looking at something on the 9th as well.
That's all, hey, thanks, Madam Chair.
I have some of the same thoughts to mention that Carrie brought up. I would like to suggest or advocate that perhaps we do, and not wanting to consume the time of staff and our... and our clerk, but that we have some working meetings where as a group, we can go through the list just like we did last week, but not encumbering Wes's time. We go through, we develop our questions, whether we agree or disagree, and then when we have Wes in our presence, take advantage of his time by, by going over those things that there might be questions about, or things that we felt he didn't include that maybe need to be included. So that, that's just a suggestion I would offer, is that we consider a, a working meeting or two so that when we come back next time, we're all caught up to, to the material he's presented, and then we can just review it with him quickly.
I would just like to take the opportunity just to mention, if any time the board meets, it's a public meeting, it's open meeting law, there has to be minutes.
Yeah.
So there, there is no opportunity to have a working meeting. It's, it's a meeting, special meeting of the planning board, and it, it follows along with the regular rules.
No, no, I understand.
Not that that's a problem for me to be here and take minutes.
No, I understand. I wasn't suggesting otherwise. I was just saying, I understand you all have more things to do than go to meetings, so I don't, I wouldn't want to create
Lisa would have to be here.
You know, so many meetings, but I think it would be helpful for us.
Matt should be here.
And another thing that we can do, and I think it was mentioned in the last meeting, as you review these things, if additional questions or things come up, you can, we can certainly forward those separately as well if you have questions or considerations or anything. You know, Wes is open to that discussion as well, and forwarding that feedback can help him as he puts together not only his own recommendations, but the, the feedback from the planning board as well. So even if outside of a special meeting, y'all wanna, if you review what the next set of things he's given you, and you have these 20 questions or 20 things that I'd also recommend, touch on.
That's what I do.
Those can be forwarded along as well for consideration.
I did, I guess my point is, I'm just not sure that us taking the time to go through all the minutia that we need to go through as a planning board, is the best use of Wes's time with us. That's my.
To, to point out, the, the purpose of the audit is not to granularly rewrite the UDO, it's to get broad recommendations for changes that we need to make. And then what happens is, I bring you back those drafted changes about, well, this should say "shall" instead of "may", or, or this line should be over here. So keeping that broad mindset going forward as we move through Wes's things would be beneficial as well. Because then what happened, it all has to go through a text amendment process anyway, so I bring it to you in the, in a public meeting, just like we did today, and say, hey, this is based on our recommendation, and y'all can discuss and recommend modifications, if there's things I need to change, or et cetera, et cetera, to go from there. So just some, some feedback for that as well.
Bob? I concur. We need a process to manage these things. The, both of Terry and Kerry's suggestions are good. We, we are trying to use Wes', we're trying to use consulting dollars wisely, and there's an enormous amount of input that, that Wes already gave us that we can work through, and, you know, we have Lisa here for, we have the clerk here for a minute. We don't need to use Wes's time. We should use his time more wisely with the talent that's on this board and our professional planner. I'm sure we can work through a lot of things and make, make the process of getting to text amendments a lot quicker and easier. And then just hold the things aside that we need Wes's input on, if, if there are, there are some, and there probably will be some. But we, we can use his time wisely. And I think we can also have a timeline and a schedule that, as Kerry mentions, that we show some kind of sense of urgency and we work through these, and they can be handled, you know. There are simple items, and then there are complex items, and the simple ones we can work through, and then we can allot time to handle the complex ones. And there's a lot of that. It's not like there's just a few. There's a lot of simple ones, and there's a lot of complex ones, and we can work. There is a, if we put a process together and a timeline, we could actually do this. And I'm not sure, you know, why we don't have a process. With Wes working from the COG's perspective, and his comments about he's done a lot of these, I hope he hasn't done them the way we're doing it, which is sort of to meander through and, and use, use the time sort of haphazardly and randomly. I would assume there'd be a way of processing through these items and managing it. And I can't help but use the term, managing it versus not managing it. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Tim?
What y'all said. Matt printed out an email that I got from Steve Edwards last week on something that kind of presented itself, and I didn't have time because we have to, was it 10 days to put it on our agenda? So I'll do what I need to do to get it on the next one. We, um, we do a lot of open houses in real estate, obviously, and we did an open house a week ago yesterday. And the agent that I was working with put the signs out like we always do at the street ends on Oak Island Drive. And by the time they got to the house and was opening up the house to do, to, to set up the event, there were some people there that were coming to work on the screen and porch, that were doing a little bit of work on the house at the same time. And a town employee drove up with the two signs that had just been put out and said, you're, you're not allowed to do that, and took the signs and just threw them in the back of a pickup truck that hadn't, happened to be sitting in front of the house that was not even the agent's vehicle. And it was kind of a surprise to, to me when I got there, so I called Town Hall and, and was, was giving to Steve. And what has happened is, and Dara, you know, you, you can give some input on this. The, um, there was a UDO, uh, there was something that happened somewhere in the nation that, that pulled us into it as far as our signage regulations or whatever, and the verbiage that was in our ordinance that allowed open house or sales promotional signs to be utilized in the community. The, the verbiage that was in there, giving us the guidelines on what we needed to do to be able to do that, was pulled out of the ordinance. So my understanding is it's not really prohibited, it's, there's just nothing in there that says what we're allowed to do. And this one town employee that somehow took issue with the fact that those two signs were out there, no other signs were touched on Oak Island. I mean, we rode and looked, and there were other yard sale signs, open house signs that were still out there. So there, the reason that those two signs were pulled, maybe he saw them being put out or something, or maybe he had a problem with RE/MAX at some, I don't know. But they got delivered back to the agent in about, I mean, she hadn't even gotten to the house in time to open the door up. So whatever we need to do to address this and to maybe get some clarification on what we can do in the interim, because there are open houses being held every day, and it needs to be put out to all the real estate companies or other people that put their, you know, their, their, you know, flooring company, their roofing company, whatever signs out there, it's kind of, we're, it's sort of a gray area right now.
Matt?
I can speak to a couple of points on that. First, the town specifically prohibits any sign within any right-of-way. It is expressly prohibited in our ordinance. Further signs located in right-of-way can be removed by the town without any notice. Those are both provisions that are in our ordinance. Speaking of this specific language that Steve sent along, the, the trouble that we have is called Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. It's somewhat famous among planners now because it says you cannot have content-based regulation of signage. If I have to read your sign to tell you what kind of sign it is, I cannot regulate that. So the specific case was dealing with the church that had a, the local jurisdiction had a carve-out that churches were permitted to have a sign advertising their service for certain periods of time. Well, you can't tell that that's what that type of sign is without reading the sign, that it says church service XYZ. This specific language would create the same thing. You know, it creates something where I have to read it and say, oh, that's the sign for an open house, so I have to allow it in the right-of-way. That is the, one of the carve-outs that is expressly prohibited post-read. There has been some clarification on that, that Steve mentions in his email, Austin versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin. What that clarified is the difference between on-premise and off-premise signage. And what that means is, if you have a business up the road, if you have a permitted sign somewhere else for that same business, we can regulate that. So the regulatory scheme that the town would have to employ to do something like this is figure out how to permit off-premise signage within the town, whether that's something that we want to do, or whether we want to do something in the right-of-way for that type of signage, for off-premise signage. But the, the long and the short of it is, if you open it up for one type of use that I have to look at your sign and go, it's this type of use, then you, you have to open it up for all of them. It's, uh, it's tricky. Sign ordinances are always a point of contention in any jurisdiction because they're hard to regulate, because there's a First Amendment considerations. That's why you can't do, read it, because it has to be allowed to advertise for anything.
Explain, if you have to read the sign to see what it says, it's not allowed?
I can't regulate it based on reading in the sign.
Yeah. In other words, if you have to read the sign to determine the use, then you can't. But, but could you do something, Matt, like a?
So it, to, to your point, if, if there's a sign in the right-of-way and we have a carve-out for open houses, I have to look at the sign to say, oh, that's, that's an open house sign, so that's allowed. If the guy down the street has a sign in the right-of-way that's advertising his business, I have to read that sign and go, oh, wait, that's one of our categories that's not allowed because of the content that's included on that signage.
Oh, I get you, I get you.
So, and, and a lot of, post-read has been frankly a nightmare for planners because most towns had stuff like this in it that said, oh, well, the church can do this, the open houses can do that, yard sales can do this, and they're all content-based. So as they work through these issues, it's, it's a difficult conversation to have because now I have to say, Tim, sorry, man, but the, we have to either say yes to all of them or no to all of them. I can't carve something out based on the, the type of sign it is.
So when the, I'm assuming the, the town or somebody, when, when there's a sign put in the right-of-way on Beach Drive about the Friday night concert, that's illegal.
Potential, that's right, yeah. I mean, it's right here. No, no signs got to be erected in any public right-of-way.
And the signs that say "riptide" and "stay off the dunes" and so forth. Those are, right? Those are really legal as well. Not to mention ugly.
For years, we, we have, we've put the signs out the day of, and then we pull them in, you know.
Is there, is there some way of, of saying something about temporary signs in the right, and define a temporary sign as something that's, you know, put da, 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 and for two days?
But once again, it has to, it has to apply to everything.
Well, yeah, I mean.
If you have it as, you can say, hey, there's a temporary sign allowance in the right-of-way of a day, two days, whatever there is, but that, that is for everyone, not just open house guys, so think about others.
What would be the bad thing? I'm sorry. Because I say, what would be the bad thing? So, you know, real estate, they have a two-hour open house, whatever. So what would be a bad, or an adverse condition that we wouldn't want, somebody to put a sign out?
You have multiple signs in the right-of-way that the town has to police, and then not only that, we have to
Stop pizza, vote for so-and-so, okay.
And then we have to, we have to not only know when that sign goes in.
Let's still get back to content, right?
We have to go by to check that it's out on the right-of, I mean, that's a full-time job for somebody.
Right.
It sounds like this, we've got a single incident here though, right? So how often is this a complaint that it should come before the board for action? How, is this a frequent complaint? Does this happen all the time in the, in the real estate industry?
This is the first, now, one of the things that I can see probably has happened is you've got some signs that go out and they stay there 20, they'll stay there for days, and that, that's not right. I mean, you've got, you know, one bad apple, but, um, I don't, I don't know. This was just a, and then, and then the, um, the same per, the same guy that pulled the signs up, the sign was in the yard of the listing beside the mailbox, and he said, and you've got to get, you've got to take that up too, that's not allowed. So I don't know that there was a clear understanding of why he was doing what he was doing.
Yeah, but my, my point, Tim, even though it's a frustrating situation, I'm sure for you, is it's, how often is this happening and being, kind of creating an issue for town staff that it should come before us to act?
Well, I can say not just signage, but also obstructions are not permitted in the right-of-way. So you might see, you know, somebody that is not on their property, but they, they put stuff in the road. And we go pick those up because we're authorized and they're not allowed. And so we go pick them up, and typically we'll leave them a notice that they, that those are placed in violation of the ordinance. But, I mean, it's something we deal with daily, and I have two staff members, and as they, you know, go on their regular inspections and site visits, when they see an issue that they're authorized to correct, they attempt to correct it.
I guess where I'm going
I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm going, where I'm going is, Tim feels like this is, there was an inequity there of some sort, and so
That was very inconsistent with what we've known for years.
So that's what I'm asking. How often do the, the inconsistent application maybe of policy coming up? Or do people pretty much say, yeah, it was my problem, I shouldn't have done it, okay, you know?
I've never had a, I mean, I've been here three months, I don't get to see the entire history of the town. But, but this is, other than, well, I would say right-of-way stuff, we get called about all the time because people put things in the right-of-way to prevent parking, et cetera, et cetera. But when we, when we see it, we try to fix it, is basically how it boils down to. But I only have a couple of staff members. We, we're not in the police. We can't be everywhere all the time.
When, when was this made? When was this pulled out? When was this verbiage pulled out of the ordinance? And that might be an answer. How long ago did this happen?
Well, the, the prohibition against signs in the right-of-way, that ordinance appears to have been done with the UDO in 2019.
That's three years, and this is the first time that we've been told that you can't put your open house signs in the right-of-way. So three years.
There's, there's a, there are a lot of things in that sign ordinance and that UDO. When I saw the draft, I was appalled because, and I understand the, the, most of that came from some of those court cases. I'm still, and again, we'll have an opportunity to look at that through the audit and make some recommendations for changes that we can or cannot, but there's an awful lot of stuff in there. And, and it does not surprise me in least that even in three years, with everything that's gone on in the last three years, and with the limited staff that we have and the higher priority issues, quite frankly, for those resources, that it's taken three years to have somebody actually yank a sign out for that reason. I'm not surprised in the least. Would I love to have things back like they were? Yeah, I'm not sure we can do that, but that's certainly something we can be aware of going forward.
So if, if this board wants to look at something, I can certainly come back next month with, with something for you to consider. But as I mentioned, it, it can't be re-implementing what was in there because it's not allowed. It has to be uniform, and it cannot carve out a particular message or use as a part of it. So I just want you to keep those things in mind. If you, if the consensus is you want me to try to draft something to, to allow some type of temporary or off-premise signage within the right-of-way for certain times, there's, there's gonna be quite a few issues to work through with that.
From my perspective, I'd, I'd need to hear more instances of the inconsistency because this could be an isolated incident, could be a staff training issue, could be a lot of things around it. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, and I was also told within, within the week, when somebody heard about this, somebody said that there's actually on my street, Northeast 16th Street, there's a bush, there's, they've got a rose bush out near their mailbox or whatever, and somebody, from what I understand from the town, came by and told them they're gonna have to remove that bush because it was in the right-of-way. Now, this is like a, when I used to do landscaping, we sodded all the way out to the road, and we would landscape, and with the understanding that if the town had to do work in the right-of-way, you might have, this might have to be dug up, but the understanding was this was a beautification thing, so it's gone. I don't know how far this goes, but it's something that, it surprises me that people are having to remove landscape. Oh, palm trees. There was a palm tree that was too close on my street too. It was on my street. They gotta remove the palm trees.
Charlie Blaylock may have made that call on the palm tree, right?
Not to belabor the point, it is almost
We can go with this next.
It is almost one It is on this 130.
Recommendations from our professional.
Is that a consensus that you'd like to review some type of temporary sign ordinance amendment?
Quite frankly, with everything we have on our table right now, I think our time needs to be spent on what we've already got going.
I was just going to suggest keep the next, regular meeting agenda as light as possible, and that way it can, you can utilize that time as well.
Yeah.
Or if Mr. Pittman wants to submit something to have put on the agenda to the priority agenda.
I understand your angst, I think everybody needs to know what the ordinance is, what it says.
That's surprising.
I get it. But I'm just, I am reluctant to jump into a sign ordinance rewrite without more, as Carrie said, without more public outcry about what we have now and the need to change.
Public outcry?
This was you. Well, yeah, okay, but, yeah, I'd, I'd rather, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, but rather than delve, but rather than delve into ordinance amendments on it right now, I'd rather see how things go through with the audit on the sign and get all of it.
And to the point I think that was made, we're fully staffed as of a couple of weeks ago for the first time in a long time. Part of bringing Mr. Golden on board is to have him focus on plan review permitting that type of desk work, so frankly, my zoning techs can be out in the field more, hopefully having a more, a definitely consistent application of the provisions in our ordinance as much as humanly possible. So you might see him riding around a bit more since they don't have to do permit stuff.
I'm not trying to get all the open house signs picked up, I'm trying to say, hey, guys.
I understand.
Thank you, Tim. I do plan on speaking back to processing the audit because there are so many things that are just, there's so many things on, across the spectrum from simple things, no question needs to be done, to potential major policy changes, but there's so many in all of those categories, I think it would be easier not only for us, but also for council to process, and once we get the final results, they'll be prioritizing that, that as there are things as we go through, and certainly even the amount that we were able to go through so far on the actual recommendations, there were several things that I think we were all in agreement with, not only the recommendations, Matt, us as well, there are things that clearly need to be taken out, stricken, and so if we had a list of those stricken things as we're going through and just get the process rolling, look at those, make the recommendation council, get those off the table, so that's not muddying up the water going forward with this, and I'm perfectly willing to, before our two-week deadline for our next meeting, put together a list of what those things were from our first audit meeting, and so we'd look at that in our October regular meeting to go ahead and get that out of the way, if that's good with everybody.
I think it would be very helpful to try to classify these into groups.
Yeah, the only thing I'm going to be looking at, the only thing I'm going to be looking at is classifying the definite eliminate, like some of the things like with the Board of Adjustment making variances on some fees, I mean, things like that, where it was clear that either that's just really not suited, or that there's some wording there that is totally unnecessary, or that there's wording there that could be problematic for the town, and we've heard all three of those in the discussion we've had so far, and so to get rid of that, how we classify, how we, how we identify, rate, categorize the rest of that, I think we still have some decisions to make on that as we go through, but that seems simple to me, and there is a lot of that, and we can, like I said, clear that off the table, that'll be less confusing going forward when we look at the total package to send to council.
So just for clarification on process for that, is your intention to, who would classify that stuff, bring it up in the next audit meeting, and then have some direction from the board as far as what actually you want me to take?
Well, in other words, in the sections we've already covered, we had clear revise, you know, we had clear delete, 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 so to me, we'd be processing those deletes at our next meeting, but I will, I was going to make a list of what those deletes were as I went through the meeting, get those to you, and verify that that's, yes, this is what we said delete, and then actually process those deletes at our next regular meeting in October. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and again, I want to thank all of you for your input. I think we get a much better product because of it, in being actively engaged in the process. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Was there a staff report?
I'll hear everything I got to say today. Once for lunch, can we report on that? Just kidding, no, I'm good, thank you.
Let the record show, I respected Tim, Matt.
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? It is unanimous, thank y'all.
Can you just give me your request for an agenda item?
Yeah.